Are we ready? Stephanie, it's after nine, I think. It's nine o'clock still. We want to be timely. Are we ready?
You're in charge, yep.
Great, thank you so much. Welcome to our meeting on February 2nd, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the five in the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have citizen input today. Michael Bayard, would you like to address Hennel Road, please? It's not on our agenda.
Okay. Well, thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak to you. The Henns have recently sent you an email describing the status of the Henns' interaction with the county, so I will not go over the details of what road features the county road department has agreed and disagreed with. But since a large housing development is going to happen around Hennel Road and directly north of Cooley Road, Hennel Road shouldn't be considered as another fast way to get to town or the shopping center located south of Cooley Road. Residents of this new housing development will be trapped between Highway 97 and 20 and Cooley Road, which will have even higher traffic flows than we observed today. They will have no easy access to parks to recreate with their family. Their only options will be to drive their car to Pine Nursery, Sawyer Park, or Riley Ranch. That is contrary to the state goal to reduce VMT, vehicle mile travels. Hennel Road is presently used as a recreation corridor and a kind of park for the whole neighborhood and could be a recreation area for the new housing development that would be easily accessed, walking, running, or bicycling, and will not force residents to take their car to go to a park. In order for Hennel Road to function as a recreation corridor, the speed should be limited to 25 miles per hour. Crosswalks should be positioned at main intersections. More three-way stop signs should be installed, and the road should be designed to slow down traffic by keeping the curves presently existing on the road instead of straightening it. I hope you can work with the road department to implement those road features. So far, the above requests have been getting no attention from the county road department. Commissioner DeBone, you recently stated during our last three-minute presentation here that you wanted to keep working with the Henns. I hope you stand by your statement and help us make Hennel Road a very needed recreation corridor. Thank you, commissioners, for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for testimony today, and we did get your letter. And I did pass it on to Mr. Doughty. So, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Or, do you see anything, Stephanie? No? Okay. Oh, I did want to make a comment. On Monday, I'd asked, what was the reservoir level at Wicke Up? Because, you know, we're all so concerned with water, and currently, it is at 41%. So, let's hope we get a lot more winter. We've got six more weeks to go. And, yes, so that was better than I imagined, but definitely, you know, it was, the level has, you know, last summer was horrid. So, let's hope it keeps going up above that 41%.
Madam Chair, just one, I know, happy Groundhog's Day. I know that's a special moment for our legal counsel, just the history of it. But also, up in Redmond, they're going to have Rock Chuck Day, you know, which is the same kind of thing. So, at noon today, there's a Rock Chuck Day celebration. They said they're even bringing a cake at the Centennial Park. And it was also mentioned there'll be people here today, too. So, if it came to central Oregon, now we might have started a new tradition celebrating Rock Chuck, Groundhog Day.
And if they found a groundhog, that's going to be a big prize. So, out here, they're going to be looking. So, that's good. Anything else? Okay, consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Commissioner DeBone?
Yes.
Okay, our first action item today is to award a crushed, pre-coated, and updated rock for the chip seal. And I believe, there's Cody. Thank you, Cody.
Good morning. For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. The road department solicited for bids for the supply and hauling of aggregate materials for the department's 2022 chip seal operations. In a nutshell, our 2022 chip seal work this year is going to include approximately 75 miles of chip seal surfacing on county roads. In addition to that, approximately two miles of oil mat surfacing on Harrington Loop Road. So, oil mat in general is similar to a chip seal. It's aggregate applied, and then asphalt product applied over that aggregate, except an oil mat is applied directly to a dirt or gravel road surface as opposed to an existing paved surface.
Cody?
And then also...
Commissioner, I'm just wondering, when you're going to do that on Harrington Loop, is that going to be before the rodeo? Because hopefully, they're going to have the Sisters Rodeo this year, and that's in June.
Off the top of my head, I don't remember the exact day or days that that work's scheduled. I'll certainly circle back with our operations guys and make sure that there's not a conflict there.
Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, approximately four miles of chip sealing that we'll be doing for the cities of Sisters and Redmond. The bid solicitation was advertised on January 12th. Bids were opened by the department on January 26th. Two bids were received. Before you this morning is a notice of intent to award the contract to High Desert Aggregate and Paving in the amount of $661,225. Posting of this notice of intent to award will begin the one-week protest period for interested parties to submit protests of the contract award. If no protests are received during that period, the contract will be awarded administratively. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll just acknowledge the Fryre stockpile of uncoated rock. I guess, yeah, there's Redmond and Fryre. So, those are for other paving projects. Is that base rock or shoulder rock?
The uncoated rock going to the Fryre stockpile site will actually be for the oil mat project that we'll be doing on Harrington Loop Road.
Okay, oil mat, okay. Great, so it's exciting.
It may also be for some of the chip sealing that's going to happen for the city of Sisters.
That's fine. So, yeah, it's exciting knowing that, you know, we have this organized so well. That's what I'm observing, you know, knowing that how many towns we want where, putting this contract together, you know, competitive bids, multiple bids. So, we kind of have it dialed in here. So, I'm really pleased with this process and the partners that are going to provide this product also.
And it is remarkable to note that the bid did come in less than our estimate, and both of the people, both of the businesses providing bids were local. So, that's excellent to recognize. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of document number 2022-119.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBone?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Cody. Yeah, just check. It would be nice to have it done before the rodeo, honestly, because there's a lot of horse trailers and dust and everything. But anyway...
It all revolves around the Sisters Rodeo.
Well, no, we haven't had it for two years. So, let's not, like, chip seal during the week of, yeah.
We'll make sure. Hey, look at that, Chris Doughty, everyone.
Where is he?
We will make sure, we will make sure that that is coordinated and that there isn't a conflict there with that work on Harrington Loop.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we have federal funding. Is this from Chris? Yes, it is. Chris, thank you so much.
Yes, this is for me. Good morning. Typically, when it comes to transit funding and the county's role, you hear from Whitney and/or Laura. But those duties have kind of fallen to the road department at this time, so I apologize for the downgrade in presentation. You'll get moving forward with regards to transit funding. So, those are residing in the road department now. So, we're here to request a board approval for several grant applications for federal 5310 discretionary funds. Deschutes County is the authorized state transportation fund agency for those funds, and we recently issued a request for project submittals last month. Cascade East Transit submitted four applications, and those applications were reviewed and ranked by the county's Special Transportation Advisory Committee as required by state law. With that, we have some representatives from CET on Zoom to discuss the projects and answer any questions you may have. So, I'm expecting to see Ashley Moni, Andrea Bro, and/or Derek Offbauer. They're probably trying to get added to the meeting now as we speak, and they'll go over the applications and answer any questions you may have. So, with that, I see Ashley assigning on, Andrea as well.
Okay.
Take it away.
Good morning, commissioners. Ashley Moni here. So, I'll just kind of briefly walk you through the four different applications that were submitted that Chris just described. Thanks, Chris. So, the first application is for funding for Hawthorne Station On-Site Security Services. This is to provide an onsite presence at Hawthorne Station. And for the commissioner's reference, this is how we supported security services in the past, was through this discretionary grant. And we were actually able to cover weekend services with that grant in the last cycle, which allowed us to cut the number of exclusions at Hawthorne Station by 55%. So, we're applying for funds to continue existing security services. Moving on to the next project, if there are any questions about that project? All right, so the second application is for enhancing mobility management and travel training. Essentially, what this will allow CET to do is to help transition some of our customers who are utilizing Ben Dial-a-Ride. This is an expensive service, and by transitioning some of those customers over to Ben Fixer Out, it will reduce some of the costs for CET, and it will help reduce the overutilization of our Ben Dial-a-Ride system and increase utilization of Ben Fixer Out. With this project, we're hoping to, you know, provide somebody who, you know, be onsite and be able to help with folks, to train them and show them how to use the Ben Fixer Out system. And just looking at the costs that we would save, if we were able to transition over just five customers from Dial-a-Ride to Fixer Out each month, we would be able to save 2,400 rides, which would save us about $134,000. So, really excited to, keeping our fingers crossed that we get that project, because it would be great to have somebody dedicated to help with those efforts.
Ashley, on this one, can I ask, are you going to just look at the totality of people who are using Dial-a-Ride and use some kind of filters or screening to try to figure out who's a good candidate to move over to the Fixer Out system? Or, you know, what's the process going to be to identify people to do this outreach with?
Yeah, for sure. So, you know, there are two different ways that we can do this. The first is, you know, we obviously have a listing. People have to actively apply, and this is an eligibility-based service. So, just kind of re-engaging with all of them would be a, we have kind of a captive audience in that sense. So, reaching out to all of them would be kind of a first step. But then, you know, looking at folks who, you know, a lot of the people who are using this service do have mobility challenges. So, it would be engaging with them first to see if this is even something that they could, you know, utilize. And then, at that point, it would be, you know, sifting through to find the folks who would have the mobility capability to be able to utilize the service.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thanks. So, the third project would provide funding to update CET's existing security equipment, and this would be onboard buses as well as our facilities. Obviously, you know, having, you know, cameras and security measures like this on our buses and at our facilities helps to create a safer environment for our customers as well as our employees. And it also helps to protect CET's capital investments. You know, CET is, Central Oregon is growing, and as Central Oregon continues to grow, as does our fleet and capital investments. And so, we want to ensure that we're keeping those things safe moving forward. In addition to, you know, actual equipment, this also will help us retain and store video. CET has a, you know, close relationship with Ben PD, and we provide them with, you know, video footage when necessary. And so, this would allow us to continue to do that and actually increase the efficiency of being able to provide that footage when needed. It would also support our quality assurance as well as limit our liability by providing, you know, video and camera, you know, across our facilities and onboard our buses as well.
So, this will actually cover, then, all the buses?
It would be replacing those that need to be replaced on our buses. We do have cameras on our vehicles already, but some of them really need to be replaced. This would support replacing them where necessary, just to make sure that they're operational onboard all our buses.
And what is the fourth project, then?
Yes, and the last project will provide funding to integrate our Transit Asset Management and Work Order software. So, basically, right now, we utilize a really basic system to track our fleet and capital. And so, this project would allow us to invest in a software that would better prepare us as we continue to expand our fleet and modernize. So, right now, we have about 70 to 80 vehicles in our fleet, and once we hit 100, this will, you know, put us into that kind of next category of agency, and we want to ensure that we are, you know, providing and keeping our vehicles in the best state of repair. And just to note, this is something that ODOT has voiced that they would like to see that we invest in. So, we want to make sure that our largest funder, you know, we're investing in something that ODOT deems necessary. So, again, this will just help to kind of modernize the way that we're tracking our capital and fleet assets.
So, you're hoping to transfer to this. When is it projected that you'll have 100 vehicles? Do you have a timeline?
That's probably a good question for Andrea.
Okay, Andrea.
I mean, obviously, the pandemic put everything on hold with all the STIF projects. Eventually, when they move forward post-pandemic, I'm envisioning maybe another 10 years in which the entire CET fleet will probably hit 100. We're investing more in non-CDL passenger vehicles, particularly for our Dial-a-Ride and On-Demand. So, that's where we're going to see the largest increase in vehicles, is more of our, you know, smaller fleet that doesn't involve a CDL.
I know, right now, we need bus drivers. Is that not correct? So, yes, we need bus drivers to drive the bus. So, anyone looking for a job with excellent benefits?
So, a couple of questions. So, these are the federal 5310 dollars, and each one of these has a match requirement. Are those matches from CET's point of view, the STIF dollars created by payroll tax? Is that just...
Correct.
Okay, so they, so federal dollars are being matched with our payroll transit dollars. And then also, kind of the big picture, I know in the past, I think we've seen requests or grant requests for Opportunity Foundation or Senior Center of Transportation and buses and partnerships there. Is that, has that come around at all, or were they engaged in this, you know, grant opportunity this year? Do we know that?
So, we, you know, sent a call for projects basically out to all the area stakeholders and providers, and what we received back were the four applications, board that you had before you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then also, STF and STIF, I think the Oregon Transportation Commission has just given the thumbs up to bringing those programs together, which may be a point in the future, but just acknowledging that this will be one whole program here at some point instead of two.
Correct.
At what date is that supposed to happen?
July 1, 2023.
23, okay, another year. Okay.
Yes, and they just, the Oregon Transportation Commission just formally announced that this will be happening and the dates, and so the rules will be rolled out. We anticipate there will be, not anticipate, but there will be trainings about the consolidation during the Oregon Public Transportation Conference here in March. So, we'll be learning more, you know, in March.
Thank you, Ashley. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to authorize the four grant applicants for the ODOT federal 5310 discretionary funding on behalf of Cascade East Transit. Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner DeBone?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So...
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us this morning. Okay, I believe, Kyle, we're up.
We are indeed. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Deschutes County Planning. Give me one second here, let me get situated. All right, this is the time and date set for a public hearing associated with a quasi-judicial Plan Amendment zone change. The board had a work session on this matter last week. At the beginning here, what I'm going to do is open it up to Madam Chair to go through our opening script, and then I'll go through the Zoom hearing procedures along with my presentation.
Thank you, Kyle. This is the time and place set for hearing on file number 247-21-000616-PA617-ZC for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the designation of the subject properties from agricultural to rural residential exception area and a corresponding zone change to rezone the subject properties from exclusive farm use to multiple-use agricultural, MUA10. Staff will outline the hearing procedures that will be followed.
So, the hearing's body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning a request for approval of a Plan Amendment and Zone Change application. The address of Property 1 in this application is 63350 Abbey Road, Bend, Oregon, and Property 2 currently does not have a designated situs address. The applicant in this case, Dave Swisher, is requesting approval of a comprehensive Plan Amendment to change the designation of each of the subject properties from agricultural to rural residential exception area and a corresponding zone change to rezone the subject properties from exclusive farm use to multiple-use agricultural. Please note that all testimony shall be directed to the hearing's body, and at the conclusion of this hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. And the hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will provide a brief staff report. The applicant will then present its testimony and evidence. The appellants, any appellants, will present their testimony and evidence. Opponents and proponents will present their testimony and evidence. Any other interested persons will then present testimony and evidence. And finally, the applicant as the party bearing the burden of proof will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony, and if requested by the hearing's body, staff can provide any closing comments. Due to COVID-19, the hearing will also be conducted via Zoom. Now, I'll go through how the Zoom hearing procedures work. So, Zoom participants are either panelists or attendees. Panelists are on video, and attendees can view all panelists. And at the start of the meeting, all microphones are muted to prevent any audio feedback. At the start of the hearing, panelists will be the commission and county staff only, and attendees will be the applicant, general public, and media. The Board of County Commissioners and county staff will be unmuted, and the chair and county staff will read the opening statement, as we've already done. County staff will then present its report and answer any questions from the commissioners. And then we will move on to public testimony. So, as we note, there is no sign-in sheet for remote testimony in this case, and so whether in person or remote, at the start of your testimony, please provide your name and mailing address. In addition, please clearly state if you have any procedural objections to the hearing's process as a part of your testimony. For the first round of applicant testimony, we'll go through Zoom participants. They'll be elevated from attendee status to panelist. They will give any presentations they may have and answer any questions to and from the commission. They'll be then returned to attendee status, and their audio will be muted. For all public testimony, the chair will accept testimony in the following order. Firstly, by attendees participating in person. Secondly, any attendees participating by computer. And finally, attendees participating by telephone. For computer attendees, again, you'll be elevated from attendee status to panelist, and your audio will be unmuted. You will provide your testimony, and then you will be returned to attendee status, and the next person is selected, and that process will repeat until all those participating by computer have testified. For telephone attendees, the last four digits of your phone number will be announced. That announced individual will be elevated to panelist and answer whether or not they wish to provide testimony. If no, they'll be returned back to attendee status, and their audio muted. And if yes, they will provide testimony and then be returned to attendee status, and their audio muted. And again, the next person is selected with the last four digits of a new phone number, and that process repeats until all those participating by telephone have testified. Finally, applicant rebuttal. The applicant as the party bearing the burden of proof will then be afforded an opportunity to present any rebuttal testimony they may have. And then, as stated earlier, if requested by the commissioners, staff can provide any closing comments. Please note that a full written version of these hearing procedures is available at the table on the side of the room for any parties participating in person. And please note that if you wish to provide any written testimony, please email that to staff. You can see my email address on the presentation here. And note that if your written submittal is more than 20 pages in length, it includes any color figures that need to be seen in color, or any documents that are larger than a standard eight-and-a-half-by-11 size, you'll need to provide a physical copy of that written testimony. written testimony to our office at 117 Northwest Laviad Avenue. And with that, I'll move on to note that any Commissioners must disclose any ex parte contacts, prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest.
Does any Commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed. Commissioner DeBonne?
I have none.
Commissioner Chang?
I have nothing to disclose, and I can proceed.
And as Chair, I have nothing to disclose. The hearings, okay, so does any party wish to challenge any Commissioner member of the hearings body based on ex parte, contacts, biases, or conflicts? Do we see any? Is there any on the screen? As no challenges are presented prior to opening the hearing, does anyone have any procedural objections to the public hearing? Seeing none, the hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners. So as we've stated, this is a quasi judicial plan amendment and zone change application. It corresponds to two properties just east of the city of Bend, a little over a mile east. Each of the properties is 40 acres in size. They're approximately a half a mile west of the Bend Municipal Airport, so they're situated just between the Bend Airport and the city of Bend's urban growth boundary. Each of the Commissioners has an overview map that illustrates where both of these properties are, and there's a much larger map on the wall over here to correspond to where these properties actually fall. Property one, as I stated earlier, has an assigned address of 63350 Abbey Road, and that's in Bend, Oregon. You can see it here on the map. This is the further south of the two properties in this case. The second property is due north of property number one, does not have an assigned situs address at this time, and both of these properties are reached via Abbey Road, which is an extension of Butler Market Road directly south. The request in this particular case from the applicant, as we stated earlier, is a change in the comprehensive plan designation for each of the two properties. Both of these properties are currently designated as agricultural on our comprehensive plan, and the requested change in this case is to a rural residential exception area. Corresponding with that change to the comprehensive plan designation would be a zone change to both of these properties. They're currently each designated as exclusive farm use zones. That would be changed via this request to multiple use agricultural 10 zone. The review process for quasi judicial plan amendment and zone change applications, this is the general pattern of, that we go through. So first, we have an initial hearing with our Deschutes County Hearings Officer, and a decision is rendered in that case. That's already been done. Next, we move on to a Board of County Commissioners hearing and deliberations on that proposal. And then finally, a decision is reached and an ordinance is signed with whatever the ultimate decision that's rendered. In this case, the Hearings Officer hearing was held on September 21st of last year. There were two public comments submitted via oral testimony during that hearing. One was from a neighboring property owner, Ms. Conrad, and the second set of comments was from Carol Macbeth, a representative of Central Oregon Land Watch. Each of those public comments covered a wide range of issues concerning these, these two proposals. One had to do with growth management concerns more generally and how land is actually developed within our rural areas. Some of it had to do with wildlife habitat associated with each of the properties, the viability of the supplemental soils report that was submitted by the applicant, that's a required part of this quasi judicial process, and then more generally impacts on farming and agricultural uses in the surrounding area. In addition to those two sets of comments, the applicant's attorney provided oral testimony in support of the application. And then finally, our Hearings Officer submitted a recommendation of approval decision on November 24th of last year. So next steps moving forward from this point, there really are three options moving forward. The Commissioners can elect to continue the hearing to a date and time certain if they choose. They can close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date and time certain. Or finally, they have the option of closing both the oral and written record and commencing with deliberations at another date and time certain in the future. And with that, I will open it up to any questions that the Commissioners might have.
So I do have one question, and just confirming, or just making sure I'm understanding the sense of this. So no other land use history for property one or property two is kind of in the land use history, item J of the, of the land use ruling. So there's no farming history or residential history here at all, is there?
That's correct.
Is there any fuel reduction history or other property management history that you know of?
That I am not aware of. I'm sure, I believe the applicant's attorney is here.
That's fine. That's why I figure I bring these questions up now.
One question I have is, what are the, what is the zoning or classifications for adjacent properties? And is that relevant in consideration of this, this proposal? Does that, you know, according to our systems and processes, is that considered, what the adjacent land uses are? And if so, like, to what degree and how significant is that?
No, that's a, that's a great question. It is relevant, and it is considered as a part of both our, our staff report findings as well as the Hearings Officer decision. The actual zoning for properties surrounding each of these is kind of, kind of a mix. Some of it is exclusive farm use in the same way that these two properties are. More of the properties to the south and southeast are multiple use agricultural zone lands. And the reason they're relevant as a part of a compatibility analysis that's actually spelled out in significantly more detail in the Hearings Officer decision, you see what possible impacts might be attributed specifically to farming activities on surrounding exclusive farm use zone properties by a change both in the comprehensive plan designation as well as the zoning designations.
There was mention of, you know, possible water, a discussion with COID about what if, what if they could get access to 25 acres of water, which never happened either. So there's just no history of water allocation of this property either?
No, no history of water rights associated with either of these parcels.
Well, didn't they actually say that it perhaps was going to happen with the prior owner, but then it never followed through?
I, I believe there was some discussion with a previous owner to try to acquire water rights, but nothing ever.
Nothing happened. Okay.
And all of the, is this property entirely surrounded by private property, or is there, is there public land in this area?
I believe there is a very small section of land that's actually owned by the city of Bend in this case, to the north, but the, the vast majority of the properties surrounding this are private parcels.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, Kyle. And I noticed that you had sent over.
Yeah, there were two.
A lot of information this morning.
Correct, yeah. Two sets of comments that were received kind of late in the process, both of which were received yesterday evening. One is from the applicant's attorney. That's a copy of a presentation that I believe she's prepared to give this morning. She just wanted you to have a physical copy of it as well. The second set of comments were from Carol Macbeth of Central Oregon Land Watch. Again, those were in support of oral testimony that I believe she's prepared to provide this morning.
Was there a copy of that Land Watch testimony for each of us?
It came in an email. I just printed it.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, only a digital copy of that.
Got it.
And then I, when I printed it, I went, oh, this is quite significant, so.
And then I didn't print it because I figured somebody was going to hand it to us, but I can't, I just.
Yeah. Anyway, I just was like, okay.
I was trying to save paper.
Yeah, given the.
Trees don't live forever, don't forget that. Some of them live less than others.
Yeah, given, given the length of that particular submittal, I've requested a physical copy to be included in, in our records, and so that'll be provided to all of the Commissioners at a certain point in the future as well. But you do have the, the digital copy.
I do.
Okay, great. Okay, Kyle. Are there any other questions then?
Nope.
No. So then could we open the testimony at this time? Would be excellent.
Yeah, I believe it'd be open to the, the applicant.
Okay. Yes. And the applicant, is, is it going to be represented by Liz? Yes, Liz Fancher. Okay. You want to unmute yourself and, and let us know?
I am unmuted, I believe.
Okay.
My name's.
Great, thank you.
I am the attorney for the applicant, Dave Swisher. The property is owned by the Swisher Trust and also by the McCloskey family. They each have different ownerships in the different properties. So I have not seen, obviously, the Central Oregon Land Watch comments. I have addressed in my presentation the comments that were made by Central Oregon Land Watch during the hearings, review by the Hearings Officer. But if there are new issues, obviously, I'll need to respond to those in writing after the hearing. I prepared a PowerPoint presentation, and I believe you have a paper copy of that, and go ahead and try to share my screen here so that you can see it. Let's, here we go. All right. There we go.
Yes, we do have that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Let me. So, basically, this is an application for a plan amendment and zone change that was filed by Dave Swisher. The file numbers are listed on this particular slide. This is a photograph of the subject property, a part of the subject property, showing that it has basically juniper trees, some saved vegetation, that the vegetation is sparse, and they have a lot of rocks on the property that are visible in, to the naked eye. And those were commented on by our soil scientist, Andy Gallagher. So basic facts about the property are that it's 80 acres in size. It's located between the Bend Airport and the Bend UGB. This photograph shows the Bend Airport to the east. The property is in close proximity to Butler Market Road, just a short distance north of there. In a straight line down Butler Market Road, the property is a mile from the city of Bend, UGB. The area around this property is developed with homes on small lots. That is the primary and dominant use in the area of private property. The subject property itself, the 80 acres, would be eligible to be divided to create four non-farm parcels with homes with EFU zoning, based on the soil characteristics of the property. It's a conditionally used process to, or not conditionally used, but it's a process that's subject to a number of criteria, so it's not an absolute outright permitted use. But in my opinion, the property would qualify based on the fact that the soils on the property are approximately 85% Class VII and VIII, which is essentially the worst soil in Central Oregon.
A point of clarification. So property eligible to be divided to create four non-farm parcels, are you referring to 20-acre parcels on the two 40s or four 10s on each 40?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, just two, basically two 20s, or a five and a 35 or whatever.
Got it.
If the property is all generally is unsuitable for farm use in its entirety, essentially in its entirety, it's eligible to be divided. And the facts in this case support that. This is not agricultural land.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Then area zoning is a mix, as indicated by Mr. Collins. There's EFU TRB, there's MUA10, there's airport development for the Bend Airport, and there's destination resort overlay zoning that applies in this area, including to the subject property. So the Swisher property has a destination resort designation. That same designation applies to property that adjoins the Bend Airport. So this application is authorized by the county's comprehensive plan that, basically, the goal is to preserve and maintain agricultural lands and agricultural industry. However, policy 2.2.3 is to allow comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments, including those that qualify as non-resourced land. For individual EFU parcels, it's allowed by state statute, Oregon administrative rules, and the comprehensive plan. In this case, we're filing an application because to have the property recognized as non-resourced land, that does not include a requirement for goal exception to Goal Three. So additionally, the comprehensive plan says that, you know, as of 2010, any new rural residential exception areas must be justified by initiating a non-resourced plan amendment and zone change by demonstrating that the property does not meet the definition of agricultural or forest land, or by taking exceptions to the statewide goals. In this case, we're following the first option to initiate the non-resourced plan amendment and zone change. In this case, the Swisher property does not meet the definition of either resource category. It's not agricultural land. It's 85% Class VII, oh, excuse me, it should say VII and VIII soils. I apologize for that typo. And it's not forest land. It does not have forest soils, according to NRCS, which is how the property is determined whether or not it's suitable for forest use. And it does, also has no merchantable timber on it. It just has juniper trees. It does not have ponderosa pines or lodgepole pines. Oh, excuse me. So under statewide Goal Three, it includes the definition of agricultural land, which is the test that's applied to determine whether property is agricultural land and whether a goal exception is required, or whether property can be re-designated for a different use that's more appropriate for the property. In this case, in eastern Oregon, agricultural land is land that is predominantly Class I through VI, identified by the Soil Capability Classification System of the United States Soil Conservation Service. Central Oregon Land Watch argued below that Soil Capability Classification System is actually a soil classification mapping property for soil survey for the Upper Deschutes River. That's not what the agricultural land definition says. It's, says the system, and the system is classifying soils as into Class I through VIII. So the Soil Capability Classification System that applies to the subject property are Class VI, VII, and VIII soils. The Class VI soils have severe limitations that make them unsuitable for cultivation for crops. The Class VII soils have severe limitations that make them unsuitable, completely unsuitable for cultivation. Class VIII soils have limitations that nearly preclude crop production. Subject property here has a combined average of basically 85% VII and VIII soils. That's extremely high percentage of that type of soil. This is a map that was prepared by soil scientist Andy Gallagher, who is a very well-regarded soil scientist. And it shows that the soil analysis for Tax Lot 100 has 88% Class VII and VIII soils and 12% Class VI. The VI's in the areas that are drawn in pockets in yellow. The soil that was located on the property that is Class VII and VIII is gosny rock outcrop, and the des camp soil is VI, Class VI soil. The soils analysis for Tax Lot 600 is 82% Class VII and VIII and 18% Class VI. And again, the, the little fingers in yellow are the small areas that have Class VI soils on them. Okay, so this gives you an idea generally what the property looks like. I have a couple photos here to show you, similar to the first photo. There's another photograph, different part of the property. And then a couple more photos, again, showing that there's a great deal of surface rock, and the vegetation is not a forest. In fact, one of the neighbors, Ms. Conrad, testified that she was concerned, or in written comments was concerned that the soil was so poor in this area that she's concerned about the ability to construct homes on the property. Okay, so then the next part of the Goal Three test for agricultural land are two parts. So the first part is the soils analysis test. If you don't pass the soils test, then you do not have the ability to have the property reclassified. So then, then you, if, if you do pass the soils test, which we do in this case, then you move on to the suitable for farm use test. And this is a quotation from Goal Three. It says, "Other soils, which are suitable for farm use, taking into consideration soil fertility, suitability for grazing, climatic conditions, existing and future availability of water for farm irrigation purposes, existing land use patterns," which addresses Commissioner Chang's question related to the neighborhood. Chang's question related to the neighborhood and how it's relevant, "technological and energy inputs required or accepted farming practices." And so my slides address each of these factors. So, start, I'll do them in order. The first is soil fertility, which is obviously the ability to provide necessary nutriments and conditions for plant growth, according to Webster's Third International Dictionary, which is the dictionary used by the Court of Appeals and Oregon appellate courts. The Class VII soils have very severe limitations that make them unsuitable for cultivation, according to the NRCS, as discussed earlier. Soil fertility on this property was analyzed by the soil scientist. He determined that has a very low productivity for rangeland vegetation production, much lower than is typical, even for soils of the type that were found on the property, due to all the rocks. Basically, just 440 pounds per acre for Tax Lot 600 and 494 pounds per acre for Tax Lot 100. By way of comparison, a fairly typical rangeland property in central Oregon is around, you know, 900, you know, at least 700 to 900 pounds per acre. No party in this proceeding has claimed that the soils are fertile, and county decisions have found that Class VII soils are not fertile. So, the next factor is suitability for grazing. In this instance, it's theoretically possible, perhaps, for some grazing activity to occur on the property, perhaps, most readily by goats, perhaps.
That's what I was thinking, goats.
Yeah, goats, yeah.
This is a lot of good cows.
Yeah, thank you. Then, farm use, however, is defined as the current employment of land for the primary purpose of obtaining a profit in money by engaging in specified farm and forest activities. And so that's a state definition. There's been litigation on that over time, and the Oregon Supreme Court's decided that, yes, in fact, profit in farm use is a relevant consideration in determining whether land should be classified as agricultural land or not. So, what we provided in our materials is information related to profitability for grazing. We use the formula that county uses in its land use decisions for non-farm dwellings, which I understand to be derived from Oregon State University, and projected a... and we adjusted it based on the amount of forage that was determined by our soil scientist, and came up with an estimate of $2,708.66 annually, of annual income. Taxes for 2020 were $4,341.64. So, and then additionally, there are a number of costs related to having grazing occur on the property, including labor fencing, the purchase of the livestock, veterinary care for them, creating a water source for them, especially for cattle. You would need to develop a water pond. You probably need to obtain, you drill a well to fill the pond, or you'd have to be purchasing water. And then you'd need transportation to bring the cattle to and from the property. They would certainly far exceed the $2,708.66 without considering the taxes. You know, assuming that you could get it into farm tax deferral, you would reduce your taxes. But the property is not receiving farm tax deferral because it's not farm property. The next slide relates to farm income in Deschutes County. It shows that in Deschutes County, farming is not a profitable enterprise, that farmers lose money as a group in Deschutes County. They lose thousands of dollars, I mean, like $19,000 in 2017. Then additionally, what the chart shows is that only approximately 16% of farms in Deschutes County are profitable. The rest are not. This property, we believe it's fairly clear that it has some of the worst conditions in the county. It certainly would not be able to be operated as a profitable farm enterprise. Then, the next question is existing and future availability of irrigation water. There are no water rights. The property has no history of water rights. In fact, the property was owned by Central Oregon Irrigation District in the past, and they did not irrigate the property, and they did not put it into farm use of any kind. And since it has been sold, there's no history of it being used for irrigation. That was confirmed by the irrigation district. New water rights in the Deschutes Basin are just not available. As I know the board well knows, there's issues about water availability in the Deschutes Basin. Irrigation water... oh, excuse me. I have an issue here on my computer. Okay. Sorry, pardon me. So, in order to obtain water rights, you have, need to buy water rights from other users, typically from farms with more productive farm ground. The irrigating Class VII and VIII non-agricultural land, in our opinion, is not a beneficial use of water. It's also unlikely the owner would be able to obtain irrigation water from COID or an OWRD groundwater permit, because it's necessary to show that you have, you'll be able to put the water to a beneficial use. As I'm sure you all know, farming is the biggest user per acre of water there is. And it obviously makes sense to support farming and to have water for good farm properties, but in my opinion, it does not make sense to attempt to move water that's very valuable from good farmland onto property that's non-agricultural land.
May I ask a question about the agricultural groundwater permit? So, if these, if these lands are reclassified MUA, and there's a certain number of units of residential units that are allowed, those, each one of those would, my impression is, fairly easily be able to secure an exempt well permit for residential use. And can you compare for us what the potential, or the, you know, kind of maximum allowable usage is for an exempt well versus what might be, you might be seeking for an agricultural groundwater permit from Oregon Water Resources Department?
There's a vast difference. It's really significant. And most residential users don't use the allocation. The allowed amount is 15,000 gallons per day, per property. In this particular instance, Avion has agreed, indicated that it is willing to provide water service here. So, the plan is generally to use Avion, but it is possible that people could drill exempt wells, but that would be addressed during the land use review for this land division. I can, I do have access to this information related to the volumes of water, and I can provide that comparison to you if the record is kept open. But I don't have it at my fingertips, and I don't want to just give you misinformation.
Yeah, I would be interested in seeing that. Thank you.
Great, I will, I will obtain that for you. But the delta is very significant.
Yeah, it'd be good to hear, good to see that.
Thanks. Okay, so then, the next factor is climate. The climate in Bend is dry, 11.36 inches of rain per year, according to the Oregon State University Extension Service, and 80 to 90 days of a growing season, which is extremely Then, the other factor that we discussed that Commissioner Chang identified is the existing land use pattern. This, again, is the same map that was provided earlier that shows the location of the different zones. You can see there's a checkerboard of MUA 10 zoning and EFU zoning. The EFU properties in the area are not commercial farm properties. They're, most of them, they're small properties that have been divided and are primarily residential properties. But basically, there's a mix of rural residential exception areas, airport, airport zoning that has commercial and industrial uses in it, and, as I indicated, non-commercial farms and non-farm homes on land zoned EFU. The rural residential exceptions areas are essentially 100% built out. Okay, so I'll go into more detail about the surrounding properties so that you get an idea of what I'm talking about. You can, you can fact-check me on this. The adjoining property to the south of the Swisher property, that's Tax Lot 100, that has the address on Abbey Road, there are four single-family homes on 40 acres to the south of the property in the Butler subdivision. That's zoned MUA 10. That's directly to the south, and it has the long, narrow lots on it. The houses are built up toward the Swishers, Swisher property. The small EFU lots on the area, you can see them to the west. They range in size from 16.35 to 19.32 acres. And there's one horse property, essentially the one in the far west. Okay, so this is a plat of the Butler subdivision. You can see that it was subdivided into these four lots. And then, the other property that is to the south, that's to the southeast, is Classic Estates subdivision. This is a copy of its plat. Its typical lot size is two and a half acres.
So, Liz, it looks like Butler was done in, like, 1983? I mean, that's when, or was it done in '82 or '83?
'83, I believe, yes.
Okay, I just...
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, after the zoning. I believe it's '83. I'm sorry. Okay. And then Classic Estates is the other subdivision, and it has two and a half acres. And the people who are opposing approval of this zone change, the two individuals who wrote letters in opposition so far that I'm aware of, and prior to the hearing, in front of the hearings officer, live in this subdivision. One of them lives right at the corner that touches the Swisher property. And then, these are the properties that are owned by the two commenters who opposed the rezoning, who were primarily interested in protecting open space values on the subject property, and not having the property developed in a way similar to this area, or actually more similar to Butler subdivision with 10-acre lots. Okay, adjoining property to the east, Tax Lot 100, there are four single-family homes on 40 acres. They range in size from, like, eight to 12 acres. So, this is very similar to an MUA 10 subdivision. It just happens to be an EFU zoning district. These properties all had the single-family homes on them, and they're not engaged in farmin's, any farmin's whatsoever. Properties adjoining Tax Lot 600, 600 is the property that is the northernmost property. And this also answers a question asked by Commissioner Chang. The city of Bend sewer treatment plant is located to the north and to the east. This property is. It's a large property that joins the east and the north part of the property, but it's dedicated just to the treatment plant use only. There are two small juniper-covered lots with houses that are zoned EFU that are located to the west of this property. And then the Swisher Tax Lot for the 100 to the south is the property that joins its southern boundary. Okay, so, the Bend Airport is a part of, obviously, part of this neighborhood. It's located on approximately, this is taken from the Bend Airport website information here, located on approximately 420 acres. It's five miles northeast of Bend. It is, the, caters to the needs of general aviators, hosts two flight training schools, and home to numerous businesses. Combined operations make Bend the third busiest airport in the state in terms of takeoff and landing. The five miles northeast of Bend is obviously from the center of Bend. The airport is, you know, within two miles of the urban growth boundary. The Bend Airport is the employment center for the city of Bend. So, they're having housing nearby the airport, just is a logical place to place housing so that it can support the employment associated with the airport. It's, the airport website also provides this information that, from aircraft manufacturing and design to flight training and charter operations, the following companies employ nearly 500 people and contribute nearly $25 million in payroll annually to the local economy. And then it lists all the various and sundry businesses, including Aerolink and Central Oregon Community College, and Oxford Corporation, Leading Edge, Precise Flight, Epic Aircraft, Specialized Aero Works. Okay, so the next factor is technology and energy inputs required. In our opinion, no technological or energy inputs would make the property suitable for farm use. The soil is so bad that it just, you can't really do anything to it within reason that will make it suitable for farm use. Accepted farm practices is another consideration. The county Board of Commissioners and the Aseti Plan Amendment and Zone Change determine it's not accepted farm practice to irrigate Class VII and VIII soils in Deschutes County. Additionally, accepted farm practices that would be related to raising cattle on the property would not make the property productive farm ground, and would not make it profitable to conduct that practice. And you would be unable to put the property into crop production, as indicated by the soil assessment system of the NRCS. Okay, then Goal 3 also asks whether it's necessary to permit farm practices to occur in the area for the property to remain in EFU zoning. Is it land and other classes necessary to permit farm practice to be undertaken on adjacent or nearby lands? In this case, the Swisher property is not relied on by any area property to undertake farmin's or farm practices. Then, this next slide addresses an issue that has been raised by Central Oregon Land Watch. They've claimed that it's not permissible for anyone, essentially, to use a soils analysis from a soil scientist to more accurately define the soils on property. They also claim that a soil scientist is not more accurately defining property when they go out and conduct a more detailed soil study than conducted by the NRCS. The NRCS generally maps soils, generally based on landscape features. And what occurs in this particular, occurred in this particular case, is that there was a class, an Order 1 soil survey that went out and dug tuss pits on the property throughout the property and determined the soil classification for soil on the property and mapped it. Additionally, the soil scientist offered his professional opinion that, based on the NRCS mapping that Central Oregon Land Watch argues must be used, indicated that that mapping alone, or that information provided by the NRCS soil survey also shows the property is not a majority Class VII and VIII soils, and is also non-agricultural land under that test. So, it basically passed either test. But since we have put in information that's more detailed, I'd like to just explain the laws that authorize the specific use of more detailed soil studies. Goal 3 itself says more detailed soil data to define agricultural land may be utilized by local governments if it permits achievement of the goal. In this instance, we did provide a more detailed soils data in the Red Hill Soil Study. In properly classifying the soil, in our opinion, certainly achieves the goal of putting land into the correct category and protecting agricultural land. This study was reviewed by the Department of Land Conservation and Development for purposes of determining whether it was conducted generally properly and according to the standards that the state has adopted for these studies. And the study was approved for use by the county on June 16, 2021.
Could we take a moment and explain that?
Yes.
The DLCD approval, is that from a different land use case? Or, I gotta say, I don't have a feel for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So, in order to seek approval of, well, basically, if an applicant wants to bring in a copy of a soil study that differs from the soil study prepared by the NRCS, they have to obtain a review of that soils report by the state of Oregon. So, it's reviewed by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. They have a person who's assigned that task, and they go through and they determine whether all of the requirements have been met that the state adopts. The state regulates this practice to protect the integrity of the process. They impose requirements on who can do soil surveys, these more detailed soil surveys. There are really only a handful of people who do conduct these surveys in the state, which is why we have people from the Willamette Valley. which is why we have people from the Willamette Valley now coming to Central Oregon to conduct these studies. Mr. Gallagher is from the Willamette Valley. But he's a very well-regarded soil scientist. And he's involved in a number of environmental and other efforts over in, I believe, Lynn County.
So ma'am, my question, is that part of this application? As in, this application went to DLCD and said, please?
Yes.
Accept this as the soil? Because I wouldn't have thought to look for that, but now I understand.
Okay, it's in the record. So what we did is we put a copy of the review that the state issues. They send, the state sends that directly to the county also. So we included it in our application and then we also provided it. We provided our application and then the state sent it in. So it's in your record.
That's fine.
It shows that they approved it and there's a copy of the soil report that was prepared by Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so this is the state law. So basically, state statute specifically authorizes this process. And basically, the state statutes control over any rule that is adopted by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So this is the guiding force here. So any of the Goal Three rules that are adopted by DLCD basically must honor this particular provision. And so what this law does is it says that if a person like Mr. Swisher concludes that a more detailed soils study or information that is provided by the Web Soil Survey operated by the NRCS would assist the county make a better determination of whether the land qualifies as agricultural land, the person must request that the Department of Land Conservation and Development arrange for an assessment of the capability of the land by a professional soil classifier. So essentially how that's handled is that they have, the department has a list of people who are qualified to conduct the studies. And then a person who wishes to have a more detailed survey contacts those people and arranges for a survey. And then the report is reviewed and approved for use by the county by the Department of Land Conservation and Development.
So Liz, what you were saying is that there's no one on that list that's actually from this side of the mountain?
I believe at this time that's correct. There used to be, you know, Steve Wirt and Roger Breen. But we've lost both of those two people to, I believe Steve is retired and Roger is deceased. And there's been no replacement that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So also I placed into the record where the hearings officer, the Rural Resource Lands Research Report prepared by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. It indicates that the administrative rules provide an option for use of a soils assessment that's more detailed than the NRCS mapping. And it indicates that 10 working counties have rezoned resource land, EFU and forest, basically to non-resource designations. Says these zone changes did not require an exception from statewide planning Goals Three and Four. Okay, so then the other part of the test is the Goal Four, forest land, and to determine whether property is forest land. In this particular case, just visually looking at the property, it's obvious it's not forest land. However, it says in the rule that relates to identifying forest land, this is adopted by the Department of Land Conservation and Development, that land suitable for commercial forest uses shall be identified using the mapping of average annual wood production capability by cubic foot per acre as reported by the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service. So what I've provided here is information about the soil mapping units on the property that are shown on the NRCS map, not those on our soil scientist report. They are essentially the same soil, but in different percentages. But I use the NRCS mapping just because the rule relates to NRCS. The two mapping units are 58C and 38B. And the NRCS Soil Survey has a Table Eight, which is called Woodland Productivity. And that table indicates that neither soil is suitable for growing wood crops. So it does so by not listing them and saying at the beginning of the table that the soil map units that are not listed are not suitable for growing wood crops. So it's basically clear that this property is not forest land, doesn't have forest land soils. It would not support a forest. And it meets the test, that part of the test. It also says that county shall identify forest lands that maintain soil, air, water, and fish and wildlife resources. In this particular case, the property is not a forest to start with. So we're not, this does not apply. The property has also, or the whole, all properties in the county have been inventoried for fish and wildlife resources. And the county has an acknowledged Goal Five program. And there are no fish and wildlife resources that are protected by the county's Goal Five inventory for this particular property. There is no particular wildlife habitat on this property that would merit protection. Okay, so the next slide, just as a summary of some of the non-resource lands decisions that have been made in Deschutes County. The first one, Lower Bridge at the Deschutes River, was 556.9 acres. The property was zoned RR10. To start with, it was a surface mine and some of it was zoned EFU. And the property was determined to not be agricultural land and therefore it was appropriate to apply zoning of RR10 in rural residential exception area. This is, this property is on the Deschutes River and it adjoins Lower Bridge Road. Then there's another case that's farther to the south. So these are in order, but they're shown on this little map, which is, I apologize, it's not the world's best map, but it's an old county zoning map. And it shows at the north part of the property is where the Lower Bridge property is. Then the next property down is the Pagel property. That was 13.65 acres. It was zoned MUA 10. It had been zoned EFU to start with. And it is on the Deschutes River, on the west side of the river. The next one down is Mr. Aseti. And I'm sure you are all familiar with Mr. Aseti and his application, his efforts to obtain rural industrial zoning on his property. The first round of his case, it was determined that a soil study prepared by Roger Breen that determined that the property was not agricultural land controlled essentially over the soil survey that was prepared by the NRCS. And the property was determined to be non-agricultural land and the property was then given the rural industrial zoning. And the next one down, a little bit to the west, is Tamaloo Reservoir Road owned by the Coats family. It's 27.8 acres. It was rezoned MUA 10. It had been a surface mine also, but was determined that it was non-agricultural land. And so it was zoned MUA 10. An adjoining property in that case was granted a Goal Exception because it was agricultural land. Then the next one down is Highway 20 and Hamby Road. There are two cases in that area, a total of 95.32 acres. There are two properties that are next to each other and they're on Highway 20. And they are located fairly close to the city, or right next to the city of Bend for one of them. Then there is 27th Street and Stevens Road. The state of Oregon was granted Plan Amendment and Zone Change for 640 acres. They were given that approval in two different increments. Their case that, the first one was fairly well-litigated and a number of issues related to this particular process were determined by the board through that review. Okay, then additionally, other issues that are addressed in the zone change and plan amendment are transportation system planning rule. We hired Joe Bestman of Transsite Consulting and he addressed the impacts of traffic and concluded that the EFU zone uses that are permitted outright would generate more traffic than those permitted outright in EFU 10 zone if the property were developed to the greatest extent, you know, possible or reasonable on the property. And then the next slide shows basically his analysis and the change in trips, that there would basically be a trip reduction compared to intense EFU zone development with uses permitted outright. So this does not consider conditional uses that are allowed in EFU zone. As a general rule, uses in EFU zone are more extensive and can have significantly more traffic associated with them than a development in the MUA 10 zone, in particular, single-family home development. Then the county's code requires that the use, that the change serve public health, safety, and welfare. There's water service available from Avian Water. There's electricity available from Central Electric Co-op. There are major roadways nearby. Road improvements will be provided with development of property. There are road improvements that would benefit the area that would be required by Cody Smith as a requirement of any development project if the property is developed. Additionally, you know, the property, one option is obviously develop, the other is to hold it. Given the fact that the property is between the airport and the city of Bend, in my opinion, it would be reasonable for the property to be a future urban reserve area for long-term planning for future growth. Properties, when you go through the urban growth boundary expansion process and the reserve process, require that you address soil type. Basically, only soils that are in the MUA 10 or rural residential exception area are considered by the city of Bend for inclusion in urban growth boundary. If you have an EFU zoning applied to the property, the city does not look any further. So by applying the proper label to this property, it can be properly considered for future urban reserve designation. The large lot size, sizes that are imposed by the MUA 10 zone provide open space and protect the land for future utilization. MUA 10 zone is the same zone as adjoining land and the zoning of the land owned by neighbors who oppose the change. The opponents live on small lots, 2.59 acres and 2.37 acres. So we feel that there's nothing about this zone change that would harm the public health, safety, and welfare and provides a logical location for a modest level of rural residential development.
Liz?
Is there any other? Yes, thank you.
I think we probably need to open up the hearing to other people at this time. And then if you need a few minutes to come back. And I realize that there's documents that you'll need to see too that have been given to us. So will that work for you at this moment?
Oh, I'm done.
Okay, good. All right, thank you so much.
I'm sorry for taking so much time.
No, no, we appreciate hearing from you on the details of the property. So is there any more public testimony at this time in the room? Is there someone on the screen that would like to testify at this time? Okay, Carolyn, would you like to? We do have five, three minutes, timing, Carolyn.
Okay. Good morning, my name is Carol Macbeth and I'm a staff attorney for Central Oregon Land Watch. We respectfully urge you to deny the proposed amendments which don't comply with the applicable law. My goodness, Liz Funtzer went on for a long time in support of the applicant as its representative. Luckily for the commissioners, this is really a much simpler case than she's presented. You just need to know one law, one fact, and the law is one sentence long. We've provided you with that law in our written submission. The law is Oregon Administrative Rule 66003300201. And it provides as a state law that land that is classified 1 through 6 by the NRCS is agricultural land. That's the whole law. It's one sentence long, well, that's part one of this rule. Agricultural land classified by the NRCS as Class 1 through 6 is agricultural land. So that's the one sentence, one law. And then the one fact that you need to know is that the NRCS does classify this as Class 1 through 6. That's not up for debate. It was, it's in the record. The applicant's own materials state that that's true. So you have that fact and you have this state law by which the county is bound. Therefore, this land is agricultural land by law and it must be protected as agricultural land. So you might wonder, well, what are they talking about? Why are they continuing to talk at such length when the matter is so simple? That's because agricultural land in Oregon casts a wide net. It doesn't just include agricultural land is Class 1 through 6 by the NRCS, but it's also other lands that might be suitable, like Class 7 lands that are being used on a ranch to breed cattle or other Class 7 uses, mostly that's grazing uses. So those are also looped in. And when it comes to those lands, well, one can hire a soil scientist and one can debate and they can talk about, you know, what's happening next door and all these things she's talking about and whether there's rocks on it or whatever. That has to do with another group of lands, the extra lands. Lands that it's up to debate whether they're agricultural or not. But when it comes to this land, which all parties agree is Class 1 through 6 from the NRCS, it just is agricultural land. OAR 66003300201, that is just a one-sentence rule. That's what it says, it's state law and the commissioners are bound by it. As the applicant alluded to, that doesn't mean that the applicant can't get this use. He just must apply for an exception to Goal Three to get it. As far as DLCD, I wanted to clarify because it's, it can be an area of some confusion. When DLCD has approved this soil report, that means they have approved the soil scientist as a soil expert who is qualified to give a report. It doesn't, they do not agree with it. They expressly do not agree or disagree with the report. It's not some sort of stamp on the report saying, yeah, that's right. They're saying the person is qualified and that the report is qualified. That's all they're saying. It's qualified to be used as evidence in a hearing. And again, that's relevant for another group of properties, those that are not Class 1 through 6 as determined by the NRCS, which this property is. And I would just like to draw your attention to all of the other lands that are also predominantly 38B in your county according to your own soil maps. We provided copies for aerials of just how many farms in Deschutes County are in use with this land for nursery, for grazing, and for tree farms. And it's great soil, it's Class 3 when irrigated. And if the commissioners is ever driven by a farm that is no longer being actively farmed, you'll see that first native grasses will move in, then some antelope brush, then some rabbit brush, then some junipers. And pretty soon, it looks probably like this property. This is what property that's not being farmed in Central Oregon looks like. But the first thing that a farmer would do is clear the rocks off the property. That's just a given. And then they have to mow back the grasses and any brush that's on there and then they farm it. It's not expected to be farmed looking the way it does. This land is unfarmed.
Carol, yes, we've gone over your three minutes and we do have your.
Just finished by saying, yeah, what it looks like is not relevant. The points that she's making are relevant if it had been classified something else. But in Oregon, we protect land for the future of the, or agricultural land base. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we do have your packet from this.
I have a question for you.
I want a question for you.
So the applicant provided two slides and it talks about 88% 7 and 8 soils and 12% Class 6 soils. And then the other one is 18% Class 6 soils. Are you saying since there's 12% Class 6 soils on a detailed authorized study that that, that's the law right there?
No, actually, what I'm saying is that the rule that I cited, OAR 66003300201A, is about the NRCS's classification. That's what it's based on.
So just for clear, so then you're saying that the other soil study that is supporting this is not valid?
Oh, no, we're not saying it's not valid, sir. What we're saying is that this is not in the group of lands where soil scientists may provide that type of data. That is, this isn't the type of land because it is Class 1 through 6 by the NRCS, as all parties agree. That area of land all across Oregon, that is our agricultural land base. And then there are additional lands that may be. And what, when one might need a soil scientist for this is when you're in that other class where it's Class 7, where it's not. Or in the Willamette Valley, it's Class 1 through 4. So if it's Class 5 in the Willamette Valley, then a soil scientist might be brought in and they're very useful for that. But here, this. But here, this is the baseline. This is the basic, you know, one-sentence rule. Class 1 through 6 by the NRCS is agricultural land, and all the factors that she's talking about only come into play for other lands, not this property.
Okay, thank you very much. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other Zoom testimony at this time? None? Okay, what about telephone testimony? Do we have any phone lines that we can identify? 5888? Okay, we're going to recognize number 5888. Please remember to identify yourself with your address.
If you're here to testify in-
If you are here to testify about our hearing. I see our health department is on the line. Okay, so they're not, okay, they must not want to testify.
My name is Michael McComber. I'm owner of a property on Silvis Road. It's 63220, 20 acres. And I was just wondering about the traffic on Silvis Road. It's a basically single-lane road. You have to pull over if a car is coming the other direction. Is that where the traffic would be routed?
Okay, that's, is that your comment then for today? Where would that traffic be routed?
Yes, and the road that services that property, Abbey Road, and it's a single-lane gravel road at one end of my property, far from Butler Market Road.
Okay.
1300.
Great, thank you for that question.
Thank you for bringing that up. We appreciate your testimony today. And we have your address and your name, correct? Okay, all right, thank you. And there's no one else then, Stephanie? Okay, all right. So Kyle, I probably should give Liz a couple, couple minutes to do a little bit of rebuttal here?
Yeah, she, she has afforded her rebuttal period if she wants it.
Okay, Liz, is there anything you want to do at this moment in time as far as rebuttal goes?
Yes. Mr. McComber's question, obviously, the public road system in the area would need to be improved if there is a development on the property, if this does not help for develop, the future development in the distant future, and so that that road would be improved. And then, as it relates to Ms. Mcbeth's argument, she's essentially arguing that one section of the administrative rules controls all others. The administrative rules of Department of Land Conservation and Development provide the process for soil testing and soils analysis of soil scientists. The goal 3 rule itself provides for more detailed soils analysis, and most importantly, the state statute authorizes property owners to provide more detailed soils analysis to be used in this type of land use application. Even if the administrative rules were read as Central Oregon Land Watch argues, the rule provided by the state in its statutes controls. And I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Liz, for that clarification from you. Okay, Kyle, I think, what, we have a couple choices here?
Yeah, I can answer any questions that the commissioners might have. Otherwise, you've, you've got a few different options here. You can continue the hearing to a date at some point in the future. You're welcome to close the oral record and still accept written testimony, the kind of standard 777 open record period is what staff would recommend. The, the last option is closing both the oral and written record, and we could set a date for deliberations at some point in the-
I think Commissioner Chang had a question.
Yeah, I actually have two more questions. Number one was the, about the, the city of Ben's wastewater treatment property. I would love to get a better sense of kind of how much of the area north of this parcel is, you know, is, is included in that property. So, so that's, that's my first question. My second question was about the urban area reserve or urban reserve area that, that Liz Vantra mentioned. Excuse me. What I'd, what I'd like to understand is, we're seeing a proposal to reclassify these two properties right now. And Liz Vantra mentioned kind of the potential scenario for how these lands would, would come through the urban area reserve process. If we, if we reclassify these lands now, I was curious about how that would compare to the kind of inverse scenario where the urban area, the urban, you know, assuming that the city of Ben proceeds, proceeds with another urban growth boundary expansion, includes an urban reserve area as part of that process. Would the process for looking at this reclassification be different if, if this was already in an urban area reserve as opposed to the, you know, the current situation that we're looking at right now?
So, that is a question I, I truthfully don't know off the top of my head. My, I, I would provide that generally, when cities are going through the process of expanding their urban growth boundaries, they are shifted away from agriculturally designated lands is, is kind of the, the first step in the process. And so, in order to easily take inland to a designated UGB, most of those lands are already designated for rural residential exception areas or something very, very similar, along with the corresponding zone designation, whatever that happens to be. So in this particular case, it could set it up to be more easily included in the future versus a specific path where you're having to, at the time of the UGB expansion, justify why you would be bringing agricultural land into the city boundaries.
Right, and, and that whole dynamic, I understand pretty clearly from, you know, the COID redesignation that we're, that we're considering. But, you know, this being, you know, not immediately adjacent to the UGB, I was trying to understand how the, the reserve area designation kind of, you know, the, just the interaction between the two processes, the reclassification and, and the, and the reserve area designation. And Peter, it looks like you might have something to add to?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Members of the commission, for the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. It's a great question. As we understand the city of Ben's process as a, you know, February of 2022, they're, they're going to go forward at some point in time with an urban growth boundary amendment. And, and the conversations that we have, and I'm not trying to bind the city in any way, but it makes sense for the city of Ben to do an urban growth boundary amendment, identify a 20-year land supply. And then afterwards, if there's still the support for it, is to initiate up to a 30-year urban reserve area. And I think that's, that's what this scenario is, this, this plan amendment zone change could be as part of many possibilities, positioning themselves for, for that second tier, that urban reserve opportunity. Urban growth boundary amendments and urban reserve processes follow this, generally the same statutory priorities. So if you want to do an urban growth boundary amendment, you're, one is first going to look at exception lands. That's the first priority. And if the need can't, can't be met with all the exception lands in the study area, then you can go to resource zone land. And resource zone land, which is the lowest priority, is then based on unirrigated EFU or forest land, partially irrigated EFU, exclusive farming zone property, or what we constitute commercial irrigation. So for urban reserves, it would work the same way. They would have a study area, the statutory priorities require them to look at exception lands, and if they can meet their need, in this case, potentially a 30-year need, if it can be met all within exception lands, that's what they would, would address their locational factors towards. So, exception lands is a very favorable designation for both, but as noted for this particular application, it's not contiguous to the urban growth boundary, and so, to the extent that an exception land positions them for kind of that second tier of growth management opportunities for the city of Ben, it could, it could help them out tremendously.
Okay, thank you.
To, to follow up on your second question, Commissioner Chang, in relation to the city of Ben's wastewater treatment facility, as Ms. Vantra pointed out, it's, it's a huge property. It's approximately 1,300 acres, I want to say, some, somewhere in that range. The only real development associated with that property is the wastewater treatment facility, which is about a half a mile, a little bit more than a half a mile north of where both of these two subject properties fall. So you can actually see, most of it is just kind of sagebrush and juniper, but there's a kind of a squarely, what looks to be a relatively big industrial-scale development for their wastewater facilities.
So, so on this map, is, is the wastewater treatment property, does it, I see a little rectangle just to the northwest of the Swisher properties that, that's outlined, but then there's a much larger area that, that doesn't have any property lines within it. So is, does it include that, the little rectangle to the northwest, or is it just everything north of?
It's effectively everything north, yeah. So it's, it's actually broken into two separate tax lots. I don't know the history behind why it's two separate tax lots, but both of those properties are owned by the city of Ben, and they're both associated with the wastewater treatment facility.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Nick, yes.
The Chair, just a question. The person who called in to testify, Sharon didn't capture the name and the address, and since it was on Zoom, if, if we could, if, if that person can just quickly identify themselves for-
I wrote down Michael McComber.
Michael McComber, okay.
I mean, that was-
It might have been McConger?
Yes.
McComber, M-C-O-M-B-E-R.
Thank you.
Okay, and then just the address for the record for, for Sharon Keith would be great. Thank you.
Your address, please.
63, 63220, Silvis Road.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I got the Silvis Road, not the number, so not, not very good. Okay, so Kyle, we could close the public record at this time and then do our standard, the 777 as you recommended?
Yeah, if you, if you'd like to leave the written record open, staff would recommend the standard 777. So the first seven, which would end on February 9th, would be for any new evidence and testimony presented into the record. The second seven-day period would end on February 16th. That would be in a rebuttal period to address any of that new information that was in it during the first seven days. And then finally, the third seven-day period would end on February 23rd. That would be afforded to just the applicant to provide final arguments. And all of those end at 4:00 PM on each of those, those records at days in terms of submitting evidence.
I, I was interested in getting that, that water information, water, water kind of allowance information from Liz Vantra. So to the extent that we need to leave the record open for that, I, I would like to do that.
Sure.
Any, is that a grabble?
Yep, standard.
Okay, we can go with standard then? Thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you very much, commissioners. Yeah, and we'll schedule a date after all this is, this new information has been submitted and the open record period's been closed to schedule a deliberations date.
Thank you, Kyle.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Liz. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now have our COVID update. I did see our healthcare team on, there they are. Okay, we're 12 minutes late, sorry Nahad. I tried.
We need access, good morning, commissioners, and no worries, we just need access to the video, please, we've been blocked on our side.
Okay, we've got experts here in the room that will do that?
Great. Yes, thank you so much, commissioners. I'll just do a quick introductory and then hand it over to the experts on this call. My name is Nahad Sadrazadi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deshute County Health Services. Thank you, commissioners, for inviting us for this-
I'm still blocked.
For this brief COVID update. Today's update will be, it seems like Rita is blocked, maybe Emily's blocked as well, so if we could unlock them, that would be great. Thank you. So, today we'll have several colleagues giving the updates, starting with Dr. Batsho, Rita Batsho, who's our Advanced Food and Protection Manager for Deshute County Health Services. Emily Freeland and Crystal Saudi are also with us. They are our supervisors within the COVID Response and Recovery Team. And also, we have Dr. Michael Johnson, who's a Senior Data Scientist with St. Charles Health System. So with that said, I'll give the floor to Rita to get us started.
All right, thank you, Nahad, for the introduction. You can move to the next slide.
Thank you, Dr. Batsho.
Hello?
I said, thank you, Dr. Batsho, for your presentation.
You're welcome, Commissioner. Thank you for having us. So, as we all already know, infections with the most recently identified variant of COVID, which is the Omicron variant, has been increasing exponentially. And this is happening both nationally and as well as in Deshute County. This has led to record numbers of daily COVID cases as well as hospitalizations. And this increase in cases and hospitalization is also, is likely due to a combination of two main factors, one of which is increased transmissibility of the Omicron variant. The second factor that could be attributed to this is the ability of the Omicron variant to evade our immune system and evade past immunity that, that has been conferred to us by past infections or vaccinations. So the precise contribution, as we may well be aware of, is not well-known yet, but is largely attributable to these two factors that I mentioned earlier on. Current data also suggests that immunity conferred by prior infection or vaccination is likely to be reduced with the Omicron variant compared with the Delta variant. However, there is also evidence that is suggesting that vaccinated people who are either boosted or who had a previous infection from COVID, of COVID, are likely to have a stronger protection against the Omicron variant than unvaccinated folks who have never been infected. And my colleague here, Dr. Mike Johnson, will talk more about these findings in his presentation. We also have data suggesting that although Omicron may be more transmissible or evasive to our immune system, infections with Omicron may be less severe than infections with prior variants like the, like the Delta variant. And with all that being said, two of our biggest weapons still remains getting up to date on our vaccines and wearing masks indoors. Next slide, please. So in response to the emergence of the Omicron variant at the end of 2021, somewhere around November, December, it, and this increased transmissibility relative to the Delta variant or other previous variants, OHA provided new guidance for local public health authorities. And these guidance allow us to prioritize public health efforts for the benefit of people and communities at highest risk of COVID infections, especially with the Omicron variant. Currently, we have shifted our focus to interventions that have the greatest opportunity to reduce mobility and mortality. Local public health authorities are no longer required to conduct universal case investigations and contact tracing. Instead, we are focusing our resources on investigating outbreaks and cases that are associated with high-risk individuals and high-consequence environments, such as long-term care facilities, adult foster homes, residential treatment centers, and homeless shelters. So, OHA also initiated a case support team to expand statewide access to health- So OHA also initiated a case support team to expand statewide access to health education. They also provide case interviews and information on how to access support services. And so if you need any of these services, you can call OHA's line, which is 866-917-8881.
Dr. Batsho? Dr. Batsho, it's Commissioner Adair. I actually called the number this morning just to see how long it took him to answer, pressing line two, and by two minutes, I was given, I was talking to someone who had been a contact tracer. They were very helpful, and they said that they sent people the CDC guidelines. So anyway, I was just checking to make sure that they were actually answering the phone, and it seemed to be working this morning.
Yeah, that's really good information, and that's good feedback, which we should probably give to them. Thank you so much for.
Well, I told him who I was when he said, and I said, well, I just want to make sure that when we tell people to call a phone number, that actually someone is answering it. So it was, it was nice to hear the young man answering.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for trying it so that people don't call and not get the services that they desperately need.
Yes.
But then, we also have our local hotline, which is 541-699-5109. And you can also call this hotline in case you run into any bottlenecks, or you, especially for those who need wraparound services, OHA will still transfer you to our local hotline. So you could just call our local hotline if you know, or you're absolutely sure that you would need wraparound services. And those wraparound services would include things like groceries, paying your utility bills or rent, or if you need a place to safely isolate, we provide all those services. So you can call our local line as well. We are also turning our focus more towards ensuring that we have adequate testing and vaccination sites in the community. We are also providing public information as well as education to the public. Our testing capacity has improved over the past couple of weeks with the at-home tests that are being distributed. Also, there's drive-through testing now at the fairgrounds, but we do continue to dialogue about other ways that we can improve these services. And you can find a testing site by going to www.deshute.org/covid19testing. Our access to therapeutics still remains constrained with our high-risk populations still being prioritized for these limited resources. Next slide. And this is the last slide for me. Our goal as a local public health authority is to ensure that our most vulnerable population or our highest-risk populations receive all the services they need in a timely manner. We continue to provide wraparound support. As I mentioned earlier on, we can provide a safe place for you to isolate. If you don't have a place to isolate safely, we continue to do outreach and respond to outbreaks in high-risk settings such as congregate settings. We are currently one of only eight counties that have more than 80% of our population vaccinated with at least one dose of COVID vaccine. Our hotline staff, as I mentioned earlier on, are doing a great job of providing the most up-to-date and accurate information on testing and vaccination to the general public. We also continue to strive to keep our hotline staff available seven days a week to answer questions and/or respond to voicemails in a timely manner. So yeah, as I mentioned earlier on, if you were to run into any bottlenecks calling OHA, you can definitely still have that option of calling our hotline. I'll now pass it on to Dr. Johnson, who will be providing medical systems updates for St. Charles. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Batsho. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, good morning, everybody, and thanks for your time. I've really been looking forward to the talk this morning because I don't know if I can remember ever delivering any kind of good news to this forum, and I think that there is a strong hint of some good news that I'd love to pass on. What you're looking at here on this first slide is the predicted hospital numbers. These are not midnight census numbers, but patient throughput. There's a slight difference there, but you can see that the dotted line, which are the actual patient numbers, is declining at a very fairly steep rate, and it's expected to continue that way. We had, on average, 85 patients in a bed the past two weeks, and looking forward to the next two weeks, and we expect that number to drop by 20 patients. So that's, that's very good news.
That's excellent news.
Now, I will say that I'm.
Dr. Johnson, didn't you say at one time you were projecting we are going to go up to 95? So to think that we hit 85, that's, that's great.
Oh, my goodness. You know, at one point, just a couple of weeks ago, well, maybe 10 days ago, we were projecting to have as many as 130 patients in the hospital. So it has, it has really come as a wonderful surprise, and I'll be the very first one to admit that I am so glad that I was wrong. But, you know, there's just a lot of indicators that even now, I'm a little bit perplexed. And I'll go into those on the next slide. Despite our case numbers, next slide, please. Despite our numbers still being, you know, nearly 4,000 positive cases in a seven-day period, we are starting to drop. Now, usually, there's a pretty good lag between the peak of when we have the positive cases and the drop of the number of patients in our hospital. This time, these two curves have almost exactly coincided, and that's just, I mean, we've had, this is our sixth surge, and all five previous surges, that has, you know, it's been, it's been a different story. And another reason that I'm somewhat surprised is we almost always lag behind the more populated regions on the western side of the state, and we're actually ahead of them this time in our decline of this surge. I can't completely explain why, but there are a couple of reasons that I would, I'd like to pass on, and next slide, please. One of those is, I mean, this is for Deshute's County, which is 80% of our central Oregon population, and checking it this morning, it's actually 37% are boosted, and that's, that's more than half of those who have one dose. So we have a good vaccination rate compared to the rest of the state is higher, but we have a considerably higher boosted rate by like 2-point-something percent, almost 3%. So that's, that's great, and that might be one of the things that's helping us, like, fight the trend. There's, there's another reason. Next slide, please. This is survey data from Carnegie Mellon, and I shamelessly stole this slide from Dr. Peter Graven's presentation that he has posted on the OHA website. But the blue line is the mask-wearing for Oregon, and the green line is what's been called the early Omicron states, you know, primarily up in the northeast, Connecticut, Delaware, Maryland, Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York, and Rhode Island. But, so those states, when it got really bad, began to wear masks at a higher rate. We have maintained that high mask-wearing rate quite consistently, better than almost any state in the country. So pat on the back, and I think that some of the reason that we are seeing this benefit of the decline earlier than expected is because of our own behavior. And I can't emphasize enough how we have been quite successful at making this less painful than it could have been. Now, everything is relative. You know, we, we still have a ways to go, and in three weeks, we're still expected to have over 40 patients in the hospital, but it's declining quickly. And we may have a bump in the road, we may have a shoulder, and maybe even a tiny bump, but I don't think that there's anything out there that's going to cause us to reach those levels that we were just, just a week ago. I think we saw our peak on January 27.
Dr. Johnson, quick question, just for clarity. So when we talk about patients in the hospital, we're talking about Region 7, correct? Not just Deshute's County?
Well, we are such a large proportion of Region 7 that basically what happens in Deshute's County happens in Region 7. But you are right, that, that I'm only speaking from the, the numbers here at St. Charles, but we are 90-plus percent of the hospital beds in Region, or right around 90% of the hospital beds for Region 7, I believe.
I'm just acknowledging, I mean, it's exciting for the whole region, too. You know, we're talking, we are a Deshute's County Commission, but.
Absolutely, sorry, I missed your point. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking 40, you know, in a few weeks or whatever the number was, that is the region, too. It's not just Deshute's County.
Those are my predictions for hospital beds occupied at St. Charles.
Yep, understood.
Yeah, but relatively speaking, the trend that you see at St. Charles is the, is the trend for Region 7, which includes eight states, or eight counties. Thank you. Lots of discussion about the, how effective the vaccine is, and you can see that in the month of January, there was a 37% breakthrough rate where those are, those are vaccinated individuals that have actually been hospitalized. But it's, that is only a part of the story. And, you know, when you look out over how many lives we have saved and how many people we have kept out of the hospital up to this point has been tremendous. You know, 93% of all the patients we've had in the hospital, under 65, were not fully vaccinated. And I'm not talking about boosters, I'm just saying that two doses of Moderna or Pfizer or one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson. And even if you bring that down to, you know, 65, 78% of the patients over, 65 and over are not fully vaccinated. So we have kept a lot of people out of the hospital, and that, you know, those that are in the hospital are those with very compromised immune systems and typically considerably older, on average, 13 years older in the, in the month of January. Next slide, please. And this kind of shows visually that, like, if you're under, you're 64 and under, and you've been vaccinated, you essentially have protected yourself from, from hospitalization. I mean, there are some rare cases there, but you can see that they're, they're well, well below 10%, and so that's, that's just really good news. And to also keep in mind that being vaccinated does not just lessen your chance of being hospitalized, but it also reduces the viral load and the opportunity to spread it to others. Next slide, please. We'll get a little bit technical here, but if we break down by age group, the length of stay in the hospital for those who are vaccinated and unvaccinated, you see this kind of a picture. And on the next slide, if we focus on this 65, 65 to 84-year-old age group, these individuals being not fully vaccinated can expect to spend an extra two days in the hospital. And, and that is, that is a result that is not, that is very statistically significant. And for those of you that look for those kinds of things, the p-value is .019. So the chance of this kind of difference happening by chance is like 2%. So this is a very significant result. And I don't know about you, but if, if I've been in the hospital for almost seven days, when somebody says, you're going to be here for another two days, that is very significant on, on the individual. So vaccination does help. Is it perfect? No. But it's, it's definitely been, been worth our efforts. Next slide, please. I really like the follow-on questions that have come my way as a result of the opportunity to talk with this particular group, and, and I welcome those questions. So here's my contact information if there are any questions that come up after this presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions now if there are any.
Dr. Johnson, I'm, I'm curious about that, you know, the, the steep decline in cases that we are seeing, which is great news. My impression was that tail end of December, early January, we were also climbing faster than many other county, maybe many of those urbanized counties. And I'm just wondering whether, you know, basically, I'm wondering whether a whole bunch of people traveling from other parts of the state to central Oregon during the winter holidays kind of put us at the, at the leading edge of the curve. You know, just, you know, brought Omicron here, got a lot of people infected, and then, you know, got us to the, the tail end of the, the Omicron wave faster.
Yeah, there are so many dynamics that are occurring that, when you take a look at the correlation between the height of the Delta curve and the height of the, the following curve, there is a real relationship there. And, and so I think that that played into it for, for some of our steep climbing. And we also had, our Omicron and Delta overlapped more than, I think, in other areas of the state, where we weren't quite done with Delta and Omicron was already taking off. So we got a little bit of a double whammy there. So, I mean, there's just so many moving parts that it's, it's difficult to do an exact cause, you know, cause and effect statement there, but it, you are correct in your observation that this went up steep, and it was because of the transmissibility, the lower in a time period from when you're infected to when you're hospitalized, if you are hospitalized. It has to do with a lot of things like that. So it's steep up, and thankfully, it, it should be steep on the way back down. But, you know, that chart is a little bit deceiving because the timeline is so compressed. It, it looks super steep, but like I said, we're at 80 or so patients right now, and will be at 40, but it's going to take, you know, three-plus weeks to get there. So there's, we're not out of the woods by any means as far as stress on the hospital system, but thankfully, we are strongly moving in the right direction.
Dr. Johnson?
Mike?
Yesterday, it's Commissioner Adair. Yesterday's number was 66 in the hospital. I believe it dropped from 70, maybe the day before, and it was, you know, so it's clearly been dropping, but that was the number yesterday reported. I can't pull up today's number yet.
Yeah, Commissioner Adair, you bring up a really good point. I'm doing all of my modeling on patient throughput, like how many hospital, how many patients occupy a bed during that calendar day. There, what you frequently see in, in the reports are how many patients were there on a midnight census. Now, the difference in those two numbers is how many patients did we discharge that day? That number varies tremendously. Yesterday, we discharged 11 patients. The day before that, we discharged 21. So that makes that midnight census number move around a lot. And I'm looking at the patient throughput, which gets rid of that other source of variability from how many discharges we do. And so that gives me a little stronger and, and more confident statements about trends and timing of those trends. And that particular number is what you saw on my previous chart, was patient throughput. So that is going to be different than the midnight census number, sometimes by, by a lot. So.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Should we go on to our local data then?
Yeah, I just wanted to pause really quick and make sure, Nahad, did you want to add something before we move on?
Just, thanks, Emily. Just Commissioner Chang, one thing to, one unsatisfactory comment to make here, unsatisfactory for both, probably us and yourselves. For many months, because the number of cases was so high and we were in a surge modality, we actually, one thing that got compromised was quality of data that we were able to collect. So your question, which is very valid, we would have had a better chance to determine some of the driving factors for, for the question. And because of the compromise that we had to make in terms of our data collection, we really don't have good local data, as, by the way, other counties as well, because we just couldn't keep up with the cases. So it's partly a reflection of what happens during surge and the work that outweighs the capacity that we have. Over to Emily.
But Nahad?
You know, I.
Oh, I was just going to bring up, now that people have their home tests, and I wonder how many of those home how many of those home test numbers are actually reported. So, you know, I think we've added another element to the numbers.
Yeah.
Sorry for the interruption.
I think that's a perfect segue into the next slide, which is talking about our average daily case count and what we're seeing as far as kind of handling all these cases. So, like Rita mentioned in the very first or second slide, I guess, you know, we've definitely switched modalities from this, you know, we're reaching out to every case that we can, which clearly, for quite some time, has not been every single case, and everybody didn't always pick up the phone either. But we've switched to more of this reach-in model, where people are reaching in for help. I would just like to note that because our case numbers are still really high, right? So, this week, we, our average daily cases was 413. And if we think back to, like, the spring of last year when we had our surge, I think our highest number was somewhere around 550 cases at that peak of that surge that we had last spring. So, just in comparison, reaching out to all those cases would be nearly impossible.
Well, Morgan, that number wasn't on a daily basis, though, was it? Did we ever have average 500 cases a day? I mean, Omicron has been the worst numbers.
Yeah, the worst numbers were 500 for the entire week.
Right.
Yeah. So, for the whole week, it was like 550 cases. And now, we're still averaging, even though our case numbers are down about 27% from last week, that's still over 400 cases per day, which is a significant amount. And like you mentioned also, we know that there's lots of cases that are not being reported because of this kind of switch in testing modality, from testing everyone who, or encouraging everyone who has symptoms or has had an exposure to seek testing through a provider, which those are all reported, to potentially not encouraging all of that testing because our system was a little bit overwhelmed, as well as the rollout of many, many, many more home tests, including those free tests that you can order. And I think Crystal will talk a little bit more about those. So, certainly, our case rate per 100,000 is still really high. We had 1,400 cases per 100,000 population, which is still higher than the state or the average. And if you think about the follow-up that we do on these, if only a small percentage of those people are calling in and there's, you know, outbreaks associated with those cases, it's still a very high number of outbreaks that we're handling, cases we're handling, wraparound services of people that are requesting help. Those are still high numbers, and our teams are still busy with that. It's just shifting from attempting to call everybody to handling the people that are calling in and saying, "Hey, I need help. Hey, I'm a long-term care facility, and we are having this outbreak. What can we do? What should we do? How can you help us?" So, we've switched in that way, but our teams are still busy and we still have a lot of cases. Like Dr. Johnson mentioned, you know, the good news is that, and probably moving forward, a better metric about looking at how busy we are, because we know that there's all these variables we can't measure, like home tests and on and on and on the story goes, is hospitalizations. And that's a really good news that those hospitalizations are dropping, and we hope that that continues. So, as far as testing updates, we are still running many tests. This week, the average daily test was about 1,600 tests were being run and reported per day. So, again, we know that that's not every test that's run. There's lots of people running home tests. And then, there are certain categories of places, like schools, that don't have to report negative tests, so those also aren't counted in these numbers. So, the testing volume per 10,000 population this week was 591, and comparing that to the statewide average, 585 were slightly above that statewide average. Our test positivity was still really high at 26.9%. So, moving on to vaccination and what those numbers look like, we kind of have three categories to look at here. The pediatric-type doses, 17 and under, where about 70, or 47% have been vaccinated, which is, you know, it's moving in the right direction and continues to increase, although at a smaller pace than we saw clearly when we had that extreme demand when the pediatric doses were approved. 18 to 64 were about 78% vaccinated, and 65 and older, almost everyone in our county is vaccinated. So, if we look at race and ethnicity, the take-home message here is essentially that we have wide gaps in who is vaccinated and who's not, both by age, by race and ethnicity. There are different ways we could look at this, whether it's zip code or, you know, other types of groups. The main take-home here is that we still have work to do. So, we want to make sure that all these groups of people have both access and information to make choices about their health, and we are continuing to do lots of outreach and work and vaccinations directly with these groups to make sure that they have that access when they choose to make that choice to get vaccinated. So, as far as volume, our volumes are decreasing from those highs. And if we kind of overlaid over the top of this some different things, like when boosters were approved, or when pediatric doses were approved, or when we had different resources in our community, we would see that there's, you know, some correlations there between how many people were getting vaccinated and when those things are approved. Right now, we're running about 10% of the vaccines, or over 10% of the vaccines in our county, which is something we want to do, is that assurance mechanism. So, again, just to remind everyone, we have this kind of distributive model where we want people to be able to access vaccines from all the different places, pharmacies, their providers. And then, we provide these clinics to increase access in certain communities, whether it be targeted vaccination clinics that we run for a certain, like, Latinx group at a market on a Thursday afternoon at lunchtime, or our standing clinics, like the clinic in Lapine, where we make sure we're there every week at the same time, in the same place, with the same faces, or at least most of the same faces, so people are comfortable and they know they can expect us there and get their vaccine when they choose to do that. So, now, I'm going to pass it off to Crystal, and she's going to go a little bit more into some of those things I touched on, unless anyone has any questions about those numbers.
Thank you, Emily.
Great, all right. So, to piggyback on what Emily just went through, vaccinations, what is available and where? And we continue to function through this distributed model, so primary care providers, pharmacies, other medical community partners, like Urgent Care, as well as the public health side of those standing clinics that are, like Emily mentioned, in Lapine and Sisters, you know, hoping to be that bedrock where people can know that they can come. We would encourage everyone to go to the Deschutes website, deschutes.org, and make sure that the clinic that they're planning to attend is indeed happening that day at those hours. We function a lot of our clinics with some really amazing local volunteers, and as such, sometimes those dates and times change. But for the most part, we are there. I would also encourage folks to continue to go, if they're looking for a vaccine in our community, to go to the www.centraloregoncovidvaccine.com site. Those are kind of a dumping repository for all of our community partners to put what they have available for vaccines and get that information out to the public. And then, testing. Again, what is available and where? And I think you'll see some repeats in here generally where you can find a vaccine, you may also likely find a test. So, reaching out to your medical provider if you have one. We do have curative sites, three of them in Central Oregon, so both of the COCC campuses in Bend and Redmond and the Old Mill Curative Site. We would encourage people when they're looking at curative to go back several times throughout the day and look, because they do frequently add appointments if you're needing a test. And then, urgent care on our Deschutes website. Some exciting development for us, the Deschutes County Fair and Expo Center Clinic is now offering testing as well. There are some ways that you can prepare for that and make it a smoother transition, so we would encourage you, if you're looking for a test, and going to go there, to go to our deschutes.org/covid website first and make sure that you have all your pieces ready. And then, for those in our community who haven't yet ordered their at-home rapid tests that are available from the government, we would encourage you to grab those, even if you're feeling great today. You never know when you might need that home test for a variety of reasons. So, go into www.covidtest.gov to order those four free tests for each household. Next slide. And this is a reminder of the support service access that we have available in our community. So, we've got that access to the OHA hotline for those sort of basic questions. "I tested positive for COVID. Now, what do I do? I don't have any comorbidities. I probably don't qualify for, you know, therapeutics in the form of monoclonal antibodies. What do I do to isolate?" For more of those complex COVID situations, or to access local services, like Rita was talking about earlier, you know, isolation motel, helping with isolating safely while you have COVID, then we'd encourage you to call our Deschutes County Public Information Line. Those hours are mimicking each other, so when the OHA hotline is open and they have someone from Deschutes County call who needs some of that extra service, they can transfer directly to us, and we'll get them connected to the services that they need. Just out of curiosity, Commissioner Derry, which number did you call?
The 866 number, 917.
Nice.
I wanted to call the state number.
Love it.
Right.
Yep.
Because the state doesn't answer the phone for reporting elder abuse and children's issues. I know I've, they had problems, it was taking like 39 minutes for that service to be answered. So, whenever the state takes it over, I always want to make sure that it's working.
Well, and I think that I completely agree with that, and there's, you know, people who will tell you who are working our local hotline that I often call to see how that's going and approach it that way.
And thank them. You know, I thanked him for answering the phone. So, from.
Yes, they do a lovely job, and it's not an easy one. You never know what kind of call you're going to get.
No, he said he'd been a contact tracer, so, truly.
Wow. That is amazing. And then, if anyone has questions that fall outside of those sort of testing vaccine, you know, buckets, we can usually address most of those frequently asked questions on our website. If not, people are absolutely encouraged to email Health Services at our standing email address, or call the local COVID-19 vaccine hotline. And that's, I think, all for me, unless there's any questions.
Well, I do need to talk to my two commissioners before your presentation started today. Nahad said, "Do we want to do this once a month now?" And I know we can't do it on February 16th, so 23rd's three weeks, so do we want to wait till, what is it, March 2nd?
So, yeah, I mean, I'm thinking the same thing. Let's maybe switch gears. You know, it's an update of, you know, infectious disease, which COVID is the big one that we're managing. I'd like to see staff in the room on here. You know, it's been great, we've been able to really extend our, you know, video capabilities and, you know, get everybody to participate. But, yeah, it's about time to switch gears here. You know, the Health Department has the authority and the experience to be able to, you know, put out a press release or, you know, share information on their website, the media can follow it. So, I was sitting here thinking, is somebody on the edge of their seat waiting for Deschutes County's 10 o'clock update on a Wednesday? Hopefully.
My mother, Commissioner.
Hopefully. What's that?
My mother.
Oh, well, yeah, no, my mom may be, too, but I'm just saying.
What about your dad, Nahad?
Is this the thing that we should be doing, is what I'm, you know, discussing?
So, do we go, then, to?
I guess I would like to say that I would, I want to assure, I want to be confident that we are doing everything we can to promote vaccination in the community, and to the extent that we need to have regular check-ins at board meetings with Health Services to assure that, then, at whatever frequency we need to do that, I'd like that to happen. There's, and there are two particular questions I wanted to ask before we wrapped up today, the first of which was Emily identified that there were, there are sub-populations in our community, you know, be those by zip code, be those by ethnicity, where vaccination rates are, you know, not as high as they could be. And I want to, I want to be sure that we are doing the outreach, sharing the information, and making vaccination as accessible and easy as possible in those sub-populations to, you know, people can decide that they don't want the vaccine, but, you know, we should do everything we can to make it easy and clear for people that, you know, what the benefits are, how, you know, how to get vaccinated, and, you know, bring it, you know, bring it to them. So, the question that comes out of that is, do we have sufficient resources allocated for Health Services to be able to do that, to get the information out, do the outreach, and make it easy and accessible right now? If not, I want to make, you know, I want to go back and visit, you know, revisit our ARPA dollar amounts and make sure that that is in place, that we have the resources available to, so that Health Services can do that very important work.
I can maybe offer some thoughts on that, if it's okay?
Yes, Nahad.
Jeez.
Okay. So, and Commissioner Chang, if you could just bear with me for a minute, I'll certainly come to your question. What I'm thinking is that we might, as Mike Johnson just presented, we might have a period of, maybe, period of time for a month, I don't know, two weeks, four weeks, I have no idea where we can somehow diffuse this pressure. And I think, from my perspective and in my role as the Director, I want to give some respite to my team, because I don't know what's going to happen a month from now, or a month and a half from now with this subvariant or something else that might come into the scene, or maybe nothing. I don't know. But it's my, I get paid to think of the worst-case scenarios, and the well-being of my staff and teams is my priority, and then the community. So, I'm just hoping to give them a bit of a break, breather for the next few weeks. But I am willing to make myself available to you anytime to promote any messages or to discuss any issues in the meantime. With regards to specifically Commissioner Chang, your question in terms of resources, we are working on our side through this transition period where we're changing strategies from containment to reducing hospital admissions and what have you. We're working to come up with different logical scenarios that we can then present to your good selves, for you to consider in terms of what you think the priorities are, and obviously, the allocation of resources that would then follow. For the time being, for the coming week or two, we still have sufficient resources. We anticipate to come to the Board for a request of a stopgap measure within the $2 million earmark, so that we can go another few weeks until we can really hone in on the different scenarios for the coming three to four months that then we would put before you to make some decisions. So, I think for now, we, in terms of resources, we're doing okay. And then, in terms of reaching out and making sure the different communities and groups hear the messages and have access to vaccination, at this point, frankly, the only way we can make a difference in increasing coverage is through micro-targeting or microplanning. It's not going to be through broad media messages or through perhaps this platform, although it's very valuable to the general public. For those particular groups, it really needs to be more customized and individual basis, and we continue to focus on that and hopefully make a dent into the disparities that we continue to observe. So, with that, I conclude my points. If you have any follow-ups or what have you, I welcome them.
So, those micro-targeting efforts, Nahad, we are doing that, and are we doing that at a... that at a, at a, at a level that you feel is appropriate and sufficient?
Well, I'm biased. I'm never going to feel we're doing enough, right? But two years into this pandemic, I also have to be realistic and make sure that the marginal, the marginal gains make sense in terms of also the marginal costs. We, we will continue, Commissioner, to look for ways in which we can reach the various communities, whether rural communities or different ethnic communities or race or what have you. We will continue to find ways in which we can engage with them, give them a voice, give them decision-making power, and include them in this process. Is it ever enough? No. I don't know if it'll ever be enough. We have, we're not dealing with momentary issues here. We're dealing with systemic historical matters that we're trying to overcome at this moment in time. So we have to be realistic in terms of our gains.
But the, you know, I very much appreciate your weighing of marginal costs and marginal benefits. And I guess if we are, if we are doing that micro-targeting work at a level where it is having returns, you know, where, you know, we're actually getting more people vaccinated, you know, at a decent pace, then, you know, that, you know, as much as anything else, that's probably a good measure of whether, whether we're doing it at the right level or not. So if it, you know, if those efforts, if we're not doing that micro-targeting with no results, then that's good to hear.
Well, certainly the work that Shayna Fowle and some of our team members are doing, especially with partnership with another vendor in Redmond and other places, you know, we're getting 50, 60 very focused groups that get vaccinated and 10, 15, 20% of them are getting first doses. So certainly there are gains and the gains are not going to be at the population level, right? The gains are going to be at individual level, few here, a few there. So we're, we realize that achieving equity is going to be costly. Now, it's also going to be cost-effective, but there is a cost associated with it. We're not shying away from it. We'll bring different options to this group and you'll guide us on which direction we should take.
Thank you. I would like to say something. I just heard on the news that over 40, there have been over 40% of the people in our country have had heart issues in the last two years. Because Valentine's Day is coming up on the 14th, I really, truly want everyone to make an appointment. We're going to give you the month off, Nahad, so we won't meet again till March 2nd. I think that's really important for your team. It's, you know, it's been two years now. You've been here for two years and I'm sure your mom is exhausted listening, you know, like, oh my gosh, Nahad, don't you have something else to talk about? But truly, people, you need to go and make an appointment to see your physician and just get checked out. I mean, 40%. That is a huge number, really and truly. It's the other health, the other health consequences that have happened because of COVID, because we've been focusing. And please, make an appointment. If you can't get in this month, get in next month. But, you know, it's, it's important. So.
Well, and I'd like to just step in. Yeah. So, you know, advocating for the culture of safety, you know, so we've had a statewide mask mandate. Dr. Johnson mentioned the masks. You know, I'm seeing more and more people just disregarding. And I'm, and I've always been a proponent of if you want to wear a mask, please do wear a mask, the culture of safety, this is important, understanding the transmission. But as I say, now I'm on a spot. If we're not going to meet for another month, I'd like to, you know, and we might talk about it as a board, you know, are we ready to start to advocate to the governor to let us go from the mask mandate and promote the culture of safety if you want to wear a mask? Because think about it, it's in our society. If somebody wants to put a mask on and go to the store, let's advocate for that and let's not look down on it. But the longer we go about a mask mandate, the more we're going to get separated and upset with each other, the people that aren't wearing it and the people that want to wear it. So I'm saying let's be very productive and meaningful when we have masks in this state.
Well, and that's like, thank you for bringing in the KN95s. Several people in the room are wearing the KN95 now. I do feel that, you know, it says on the box of the surgical mask, it doesn't stop a virus. So that's been my story for months. It's, if you're going to tell someone to wear a mask and remember originally, I had a, we didn't have any masks in our country. And people started sewing. One of my friends made 500 masks that were cloth. And, you know, she says now, she goes, you know, they said they weren't safe, but they, we brought them into our culture, cloth masks. And it's really, you know, it's important if you're going to do something that you're going to do it where it's actually going to give you some protection. So anyway, thank you for the KN95s.
Just to be, just to be clear on mask information, there is a range of protection with masks. Masks that are not KN95s don't do nothing. But when we're dealing with something like the Omicron variant, this is so transmissible, KN95 or N95 mask will provide a higher level of protection. But, you know, I really want to emphasize that other masks, you know, fine cloth masks, surgical masks, they, they do something. They are, they are valuable. So, you know, that the highest level protection comes from the KN95 or the N95, but there is a continuum of value provided by a whole range of masks. So I really hope that people do not think that if they don't wear KN95 masks, they're not doing anything. So, and to go back to the discussion of promoting vaccination, I, the other, the other thing I wanted to ask about is actually something that I don't necessarily think we need as intensive work from health services to advance, which is, I want to return to the idea of the county providing a model in our community and providing vaccination incentives to employees. And I do think that this is probably work that would fall more heavily on the admin department and human resources than on health services. But, you know, the basic idea again would be that we could provide an incentive to employees for, you know, for being vaccinated and insulating the county from potential loss of workdays and potential costs of hospitalization. And that, in my mind, is worth providing employees with something like a, you know, covering for a month or two months their premium, their health insurance premium co-pay. And I do believe that by modeling this approach to encouraging incentivizing vaccination, not mandating it, you know, we spent a few months kind of watching to see whether there were going to be mandates. There are not going to be mandates. But through incentivization, we can help to increase the vaccination levels, both within our workforce and within our broader community. So I'd like to put that back on the table.
I mean, that's a discussion amongst us. And that, I mean, what's the why there? What, why? Why would we do that?
We just heard, I mean, I thought Dr. Johnson's data was pretty compelling. The, you know, even, even in the worst week, when 36% of the people who were hospitalized, 37% of the people who were hospitalized were breakthrough cases, 80% of our population in our, in our county is vaccinated. And they are still, even with, you know, the Omicron variant that produces these, that is able to break through, that 80% of the population is still less than 40%.
Well, but my point is, I mean, so, so.
So the goal, the goal is.
Yes, we have statistics that show that there's an effect and people have heard this information and we've been in it for two years. People are making clear personal choices. So the why from your point of view is we're going to save society by incentivizing aggressively, I'm trying, you know, the people that have not chosen to get a vaccine. So what's the why?
100 bucks or 200 bucks of?
Yeah, but it crosses the line of personal responsibility.
Incentivizing.
It crosses the line of not asking, it's like, okay, well, we're going to really, really incentivize, you know, that, it's just, it crosses a line for me.
And if people don't want to take the incentive, they don't have to. So what is, you know, why is that a?
I'm just saying, it's between the three of us at this point. I don't, you're throwing it out to the world, but you're asking two other commissioners to buy into this. And I'm not going to support that.
That, I mean, that is, that is your choice?
Yeah.
It's our choice.
But that is.
It's called my body, my choice. Isn't that what I've been hearing for a long time?
Thanks for bringing it up. But I mean.
It is my policy proposal. I want to put it out there. And if you want to indicate right now that you would not vote for that.
Well, that's my point. I mean, we're, I'm sitting here waiting patiently to complete this. I was going to try to go to a lunch thing. But my point is, and you're talking to the world, but you're really asking us. And I'm just acknowledging, no.
Okay. With that, the meeting is adjourned until?
Okay.
1 a.m.
1 p.m.
Oh, no, let's wait till 1 a.m., guys. Give us a couple hours to cool off. Oh, no, let's wait till 1:00 AM, guys. Give us a couple hours to cool off.
Good afternoon session, please, with Senate Bill 391, that most important bill. Thank you, Tanya, for joining us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. It's been a while since I've been in front of you, so hello. Yeah, so I'm here for, I hope you can hear me, it sounds a little echoey, to provide an update on the latest and greatest about Senate Bill 391, Rural Accessory Dwelling Units. It should be a fairly brief update. First of all, I'm going to just talk briefly about the legislative matters pertaining to where Senate Bill 391 and Senate Bill 762, which is the wildfire bill, where they intersect or where they no longer intersect, and we are trying to get around that problem. I'm sure the board is aware of this already, there's been some emails flying around in the past, but I just want to make it, kind of put it out there and make it clear to the public, for anyone who's watching, just about the implications of that. Subsequently, I'll talk a little bit about how that affects the timeline for the adoption, and then just briefly follow up on the progress of the other things we're working on about rural ADUs. So, as we've noted, time and time again, Senate Bill 391 refers a lot, has a lot of wildfire criteria, and a lot of those wildfire criteria are contained in the newly passed Senate Bill 762. 762 was passed, I believe, a few weeks after 391, and they didn't quite talk to each other, unfortunately, and so we're really parsing out what this is actually meaning on the ground for local implementation. In Senate Bill 391, one section requires that the lotto parcel and the ADU have to comply with the rules of the State Board of Forestry under ORS 477015 to 477061. And there's a subsequent reference to ADUs that don't, that are not subject to those ORS sections. Those sections of the ORS pertain to defensible space standards and the administration of them. The State Board of Forestry previously was responsible for administering those, defining those, defining the WUI, a lot of those things. The problem lies in 762, which is, as you know, an omnibus wildfire bill that covers pages and pages of everything to do with wildfire. This rewrote those sections, that changed the responsibility for the administration and the requirements for defensible space. It's now the state fire marshal, and it created some timelines in terms of establishing new standards and requirements. But in doing so, it actually deleted those parts of code that Senate Bill 391 refers to. So they refer to this ORS 477, those are blank pages now, those don't exist. As I, I was in a conference yesterday with somebody talking about legislative matters, and I believe that they talked about the carnage of the legislative session and how quickly everything moves, and sometimes stuff like this just happens. So our hopes are that in the short session upcoming, which started, I believe, yesterday, that this, that there will be a patch. It is apparent that, obviously, the intent of 391 is to have defensible space standards, but without a direct reference to it, it's not really enforceable, it could be legally vulnerable, so it puts the county or anyone who wants to administer or utilize Senate Bill 391 in a tricky position. So we're hoping that this legislative session, there will be a patch that just reinstalls that reference to the correct part of Senate Bill 762, rather than that deleted section of the ORS. I don't know if there's been any updates on that in the last 24 to 48 hours, but our hope is that that's going to continue to move forward, and that will, I'm not exactly sure what bill that's going to be in, but it's definitely being tracked. So, that's where we are with that. We, oh, sorry. We were hoping that there might be some sort of interim solution until that, because it is referring to a timeline that is prescribed in 762, in other words, the defensible space standards need to be set by the end of December 2022, the end of this year, which obviously extends the timeline a bit for rural ADUs. We are hoping that there could be some sort of interim solution, some set of standards to be used for that several months, but it was told to us that this would not be possible. So we do have to wait for that to be implemented. And of course, because Deschutes County is the first, the first county going down this road, we're forging the path. So we're the ones who are the leaders, and unfortunately, that does mean a delay to the timeline. And we had brought this up to DLCD and the governor's office, and this was essentially the first they realized it, to my knowledge, and Peter was the one who had these conversations, but I think once people started looking closely at the language, they thought, oh yeah, this is a problem. So we're really, really looking forward to a fix so that this can all move forward.
So, short sessions were made to fix problems in a timely manner. Hmm, but it's not going to happen, it sounds like, huh?
Well, I think the anticipation is that it will be fixed in the short session, as far as I know.
But I guess I'm referencing the timeframe between June to December, the bottom line is it's still not, we're not going to be able to proceed?
Well, unfortunately, the fix is what actually officially links it to that December deadline, otherwise there's no deadline, because there's no standards that it's referring to. So, it's an unfortunate situation, but we're, you know, it's kind of out of local hands, and we're just going to roll with it as best we can and do what we can on the staff side to keep things moving on our side. And, you know, I look forward to updates, how that short session is going about that patch. So, this, just, I'm going to briefly go about explaining the timeline as it pertains to the intersection of 762 and 391. As you probably are aware, statewide wildfire maps have to be completed by June 30th. We've referred to this in the past, when we were talking about rural ADUs. By October 1st, the new building code, otherwise known as R327, will be adopted. It won't be applied yet, it'll just be adopted. Then, by December 31st, this is assuming this patch goes through, the minimum defensible space requirements will be established, and Senate Bill 391 will officially point to that. And lastly, the amended building code standards, R327, become effective or operative by April 20, excuse me, April 1st, 2023. And I've informed that that's fairly standard, you adopt it, and then six months later, it becomes effective. It lets, lets building professionals and people know what to expect and how to implement it. So that does delay things a bit. However, we do think that the building code timeline shouldn't adversely affect the rest of the timeline. Assuming that the defensible space matters are sorted out at the state level by the end of December, there will be some coordination required after that to just figure out how to translate that locally, how to implement it, make sure we're all on the same page. And then we'll initiate the legislative process, knowing that that building code will come online in April. So we think that that should actually work out nicely in terms of how the hearings and the work sessions all pan out over those early months of 2023. And so the hopeful thing is that we will have an adoption. And so the hopeful thing is that we will have an adoption, or excuse me, an effective date of April 1st, 2023, for rural ADUs. The bright side of that is that the building code, while it seems like that's the last point, people will know what they're, what's expected of them as of October in terms of building code requirements. So they can be poised and ready to go for when these amendments are effective. That's a little bit about the timeline, and then I'll just briefly finish up with a statement of where we're going. As you know, that's the wildfire state-level track of things that's moving. We have the local things that we're working on as staff, that we've been working on. We're going to continue to do so for a little bit, come back to the Board in about four to six weeks with just a draft, a point-in-time draft, to just show where we're at with the options that we've discussed in the past, and then we're going to take a pause while we wait for the state-level stuff to be sorted out. So we'll have it in a position that's ready to go. We can, of course, tinker with it if something comes up, but we can devote staff time to other long-range projects, and then we'll be ready to go when those state-level things shake out. So we'll come back to you once more, just leave something, just to have something to refer to, and then we'll come back. And so then hopefully the process will be able to be initiated pretty seamlessly once everything's ready from the state level. So that is my brief update on Senate Bill 391 and 762.
So you're talking about coming back like March 15th or somewhere in that?
I'm sorry?
Like you're coming back March 15th, and you'll?
Yeah, four to six weeks, probably.
Yeah, and you'll let us know where we are, and then you can pause and work on something else?
Exactly.
Oh, yes. Because I know there's a lot going on, so.
There is.
So, Tanya, I'm not 100% clear here. We were waiting for the R327 building codes, no matter what?
Yes. This is not changed by the legislative patch. We were unclear in the very beginning, to be perfectly honest, on if that would apply or if we could just use the building code that's in place at the time, and it was determined that we do need to wait for R327, because the intent is that it's, let's see, the accessory dwelling unit complies with the Oregon Residential Specialty Code relating to wildfire hazard mitigation for the mapped area. So that doesn't really exist right now, essentially, so the interpretation is that we do need to wait for that R327.
Okay. So the limbo for the defensible space requirements, I mean, while it's stressful, we were still waiting for the R327 codes?
There's still, yes.
No matter what? Okay.
There's additional limbo. There's multiple subsets of limbo, and that is correct. So it's just, you know, there's a little bit of uncertainty about that legislative patch. We just hope it's going to happen and be pretty simple and straightforward. We'll have to circle back if that gets derailed for any reason and see what the interim solution could be, but we will cross that bridge when we come to it, I think.
Thank you.
So the sad news, nothing is going to happen this year, as far as ADUs and Deschutes County?
As far as being able to actually apply for them and build them.
Okay.
That's correct. And I have been, you know, I receive lots of inquiries all the time, and I've been making that very clear to people, and people are generally understanding, and we're going to make all of our communications very, very clear so that people know what's going on and when.
Okay. But you are telling people if they're thinking about buying like an MUA or RR10 lot, that they could actually, over two acres, they could actually, at some point in the future, build an ADU with their house?
I'm telling them, I'm not telling them 100% that they can, because, you know, that is not.
Right. We still haven't gotten through all those little details.
Yeah, we have the criteria. We have the language and the actual Senate Bill 391. We have the basic stuff that doesn't really need interpretation in many cases, and then trying to make it very clear of what is still up for discussion, you know, the interpretation of the distance, the interpretation of the size. We're making it clear to people that they're going to have to have septic evaluations, because that could be, you know, so this will help people plan financially and just project management-wise of what they're actually going to need to do. So we're trying to make it as clear as possible while recognizing that some of it is not yet clear, if that makes sense.
Yes. Transparency as best we can.
Exactly.
Thank you. Any questions?
So just acknowledging the exciting topic of distance from primary dwelling, I had some discussions with a few people, and it was pointed out that, oh, you know, we, back in the day, it was somebody's comment, we used to build the big shop with an interior apartment for the, you know, these were rural recreational lots that weren't primary dwellings for some people, and they were permitted structures. So you take a big square shop box garage, and you build an apartment inside, or you build the apartment outside that same type structure. So those are just two examples of development that has happened on those, as I say, rural recreational lots back in the day, which got me to the concept of, oh, I see, you know, there's this apartment. It's either inside or outside a shop, if you think of a shop, because that was what I was excited about. But then, so I'm just saying, I'd request that the code reflect an option for us to discuss that says, a living space of, you know, a development is within 100 feet, referring to if it was a garage shop-type building, and it had a 900-square-foot apartment built into it, that that apartment footprint is within 100 feet, and maybe the shop is a little bit farther away. So just kind of a concept.
That's super helpful, and I think our intent will be, in general, once this gets more legs, is to kind of hash out the types of ADUs that could exist, you know, form-wise, you know, is it not just necessarily this thing sitting on its own, and kind of acknowledging what it can and what it cannot be.
And that's just down the path of that shop scenario, but it was just interesting. I mentioned it to somebody, and they're like, oh, what about this? What about that? I'm like, oh, interesting. But then, as I say, just, if somebody's going to build a, you know, 50 by 70, whatever, some big old thing, and they want to put an apartment in it, which has been done pretty regularly around in the southern Deschutes area, that that apartment be required to be in that 100-foot footprint, maybe not the whole footprint of the whole building, but there can be all kinds of other small homes, tiny homes, garages, house combos, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of permutations.
Yep.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, there may be a legislative lesson learned for us in the county from this whole situation, which is, we as a county really did not engage proactively with SB 762. I mean, it's like a profoundly important bill, statewide bill, to address wildfire risk to our communities, which is an extremely important issue to our, to Deschutes County, and we didn't, you know, we kind of tracked it at a distance. We didn't weigh in. I weighed in individually on certain aspects of it, but if we had recognized that it was an extremely important bill to the state, recognized that it was an opportunity for us to accomplish some of the important, you know, commute wildfire protection goals that we had, and more proactively engaged with it, you know, some of these things that we need to happen, conceivably, we could have asked for more compressed timelines on. We could have helped to shape the legislation so that it was more conducive and compatible to our goals in SB 391, and maybe we could be getting to those rural ADUs faster. So, you know, I just think, hindsight is 2020, but, yeah, as we look forward to future legislative sessions, you know, things that are going to have really important impacts and consequences and benefits for us, I'd like us to look more proactively at and more actively engage in.
For us, it was an interesting kind of window, at least for me personally, into the legislative process and how, you know, all these things apply to the county, but they're not necessarily talking to each other, these two bills, so that can be, you know, interesting once you actually start parsing it and saying, okay, well, this refers to this, but wait, it doesn't, and, you know, it's an interesting lesson, how the sausage gets made.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I know Ed was, you know, Ed carefully reviewed SB 762 with a wildfire protection perspective, but, you know, there are implications that if we had made this bill a bigger focus for the county as a whole, you know, maybe we could have connected some dots sooner.
Okay. Well, thank you, Tanya.
Thank you very much.
Should we go, is the judge going to be available at this moment, or is he not available till 1:30?
That's a good question. We can ask Stephanie if Judge Faedley's available.
Okay.
I understand that Sharon Keith coordinated with Judge Faedley, so she may be coming on now to share information.
Sharon.
Judge Faedley did anticipate he was going to be present in person today, so he's probably bringing a tag that late.
Well, we're.
We're early. So we can, Laura, do you want to start then with your presentation?
Okay, yeah, we'll just get started on that a little bit.
Thank you, Sharon.
Happy to take a pause whenever Judge Faedley comes in. Thank you, Laura Scundrick, Administrative Services. So each quarter, the Board of Commissioners reviews applications submitted to the Deschutes County Discretionary Grant Program and makes awards accordingly. Today, the Board will consider requests made for activities to take place beginning on or about the third quarter of fiscal year '22. So if the Board would like, I'm happy to start at the top of our list here. Oh, thank you. Uh-oh.
Right.
Make it a little bigger. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so starting with Boys and Girls Club of Bend, they are requesting $2,000. This would pay for materials and installation for a fence to create a safe space where their HVAC is located. They have found hazardous materials out there due to some houseless individuals in that area, and so this grant would also help them to clean up, clean that up.
You can put me down for 700.
And I'll do 500.
500 and 700 gets us to?
12.
1200. Could you put me down for 600?
A little bit of everything.
Okay, there we go. All right, next up is Cascades Theatrical Company. They are requesting $3,000 for their new teen musical production, where teens act and produce a theatrical performance. So these funds would pay for music and royalty rights for that performance.
And I did notice that they have a very, very good treasurer in their group. Did you see that?
Good what? I'm sorry.
Treasurer. Their treasurer is probably one of the most outstanding treasurers in the county, I do believe, so.
Also a former past president of that organization.
Okay, all right. Well, I know, Dave, I thought that was really lovely. I will do 500.
Please put me down for 600.
500 for myself.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Clear Alliance. They're requesting $2,000. Funds would help them to update their website with a learning management system, which would help them better track student attendance and evaluate the success of their courses.
And you noticed that Sergeant Kent Vanderkamp is on their Board of Directors from Deschutes County. So I can do 500.
It's a 500-day so far for me.
Well, I, yeah, I don't, I'm on a budget today.
Well, yeah, I mean, I always want to show some support, but yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I've asked a couple of times for methods to evaluate the impact and effectiveness of their work, and I haven't seen it yet. I appreciate that this website will possibly help them track, you know, who has viewed their information, and how many times, but that doesn't necessarily get me to, you know, does that lead to any behavior change? So I'd like to see more methodology to evaluate the impact of their work before I put in large amounts. Put me down for 100.
I'm happy to share that feedback with them. I have shared your feedback in the past, so.
Thank you.
100.
You know, when we bring health services in here to try to understand how they're affecting people's behavior or improving health outcomes, we, you know, I grill them about how they're going to measure the effectiveness of their work, and I know we're talking about smaller amounts of money, but I'd still like to see the same kind of approach.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Okay. So should we, do you want to do one more, and then we'll take a pause? Laura, do you mind?
Sure.
Be respectful of the judge's time, and he's timely.
Right, okay. So next up, Council on Aging. They are requesting $3,640. These would help offset the printing costs for their new project. They are providing activity packets for mental stimulation for older adults in partnership with the Deschutes Public Library. They've been doing this for a couple of months now and have received positive feedback. They are focusing on older adults who have been homebound or isolated due to the pandemic.
Back to the $700 number.
700.
Little bit for everybody. Well, we'll see if it's for everybody.
100 for me, too, please.
And I'll do 300.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Laura, do you think it would be okay if we took a break then?
Absolutely. I will save that and pause.
Great. So we'll be at the Equine Outreach will be our next one. Oh, boy. Okay. Judge Faedley, are you ready?
I am, sure.
We are. Thank you so much. We're glad the traffic wasn't bad today.
Actually, I was in town for something else, so thank you for fitting into my schedule.
Oh, good.
Well, it's great to see you in person. It's been a while.
It has, hasn't it?
Yep.
It's great to be here.
Chair, Derek Mervis of the Commission, Commissioner Chang asked, had some questions about our operation after he saw one of our monthly reports, and so I'm here to answer questions about what's going on and talk to you about what you'd like to know about. I hope that you got my little one-page summary that went over the last three years of our ticket filings and revenues.
I may have received it. I don't have it with me today.
I don't think I got it.
Yeah, so we may want to take a moment, yeah.
Yes. Do you have extra copies?
I do.
That was really good. The last three years, okay. So we can see a real difference from 19, 20, 21.
So one of the things we can start off with is just the operations, you know, the fact that you're operating in Redmond and Lapine, and do you have a setup in Sisters? Yeah, so just the basics of the multiple courtrooms.
Well, we, yeah, our headquarters is in Redmond. We have court there on Mondays and Monday mornings and Monday evenings and Wednesday mornings, and then we rotate monthly, having a Wednesday 5:00 session, one month in Lapine and one month in Sisters. And I think that the deputies and the, they will, they'll side into the court that's the most convenient for the citizen, at least that's what they tell me they do, and that seems to be the case. And of course, as somebody from out of town, it's just if a Lapine deputy gives them a ticket, that's, they end up there. We meet, we have, our courtroom is in the Redmond City Council Chambers, and in Sisters, it's in the Sister City Council Chambers, and then we're in the South County Building in that room there, where Lapine. And we just started, we didn't go to Lapine. We just started going back to Lapine, I think, about six months ago, and Sisters. Sisters, the city hall was closed, and when, so when that opened back up, we went ahead and started going there, and then in Lapine, it was just a matter of when we felt that it was more comfortable and we had a handle on the numbers.
Yep. Great. Well, thank you very much. As I said, I wasn't sure about Sisters. I guess I hadn't really, you know, because I've seen the operation in both Lapine and in Redmond, and then I maybe knew about Sisters, but I wasn't sure if it was the City Council Chambers or not, but that's great. Thank you for getting around the county.
That's, you know, that's kind of what, that's a justice court thing.
Yep.
They've always done that for justice court, and I think it's really a part of our value.
Well, now we have a relationship with the Sheriff's Office in Sisters and Lapine. Well, now we have a relationship with the Sheriff's Office in Sisters and Lapine. So I don't know if that, you know, I don't know if they're specifically citing people differently because they have that presence, you know, the patterns. But there's just that next deputy in Sisters and now in Lapine, too.
Yeah, and we're seeing more tickets in Sisters than we're used to. Public safety there is a big, you know, it's, it's got a lot of traction politically until the locals start getting tickets, of course. But the, there've been, they're really appreciative of the sheriff's presence there, and they're, and they're really doing a good job, and they're doing, whoever running the, whatever deputy is running the place out there really knows what he's doing.
Lieutenant Davis, I believe, Chad Davis?
Great.
He was on a homeless call with me last night, Lieutenant Chad Davis.
That's who it is, yeah. Yeah, he's...
And he lives right there in town, I believe.
Yes.
When you say it's SC revenue, what does that mean?
Small claims.
Okay.
So FY 1920 is the year before COVID. And so then 2021 is when COVID started in March of 20. And so that was a full year of COVID. And then the current fiscal year is, you know, we're still dealing with COVID. But, you know, in, in March of 2020, everything shut down. And there, the ticket volume went down because, of course, law enforcement was doing other things besides writing tickets, and rightfully so. But we always, we kept the court open through the entire period, and we were able to handle the numbers. And even though Redmond City Hall was closed, we still had access to the City Council Chambers through a separate door. And, you know, so far, it's worked out. In FY 1920, we were very close to paying for ourselves that year. And then, of course, the next year, when our ticket volume went down, then the revenue went down. And, and we were also hit with legislation that removed the incentive to comply with your sanction, your traffic sanction obligations of having your driver's license suspended. And so the little blurb at the very bottom is what we estimate to be our revenue impact of not having the sanction or the incentive of keeping your driver's license valid to, as a, as an incentive to pay your fines, not having that anymore. And we figured that at about 12,000 a month less revenue we're seeing because of that. So our ticket volume is about up to where it was, where we were almost in the black now. And in our, even though we think it's $120,000 a year is what we're, what we're not getting because of the driving while suspended legislation, we've been able to about cut the impact of that in half as far as our bottom line. And so if, you know, if it wasn't for that, you know, we'd, we'd be back to, you know, not costing the county any money. But instead, but we're not $120,000 away. We're about $63,000 away.
And Judge Faedley, when, when we were going through our Budget Committee hearings, you know, at the beginning of the fiscal year or just before the beginning of the fiscal year, the question did come up, you know, how many of the people that are responding to violations to your court are, are people who are not local, you know, who don't live in Deschutes County? And that, you know, my, my impression is it's a significant amount. And that, in my mind, is a good justification for us to use transient room tax revenues to kind of fill the gap or make your, you know, make your department whole or make your office whole. So could you review those statistics for us? Or, I mean, if you, if you have them, or, you know, just give us a general ballpark sense?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't have, I don't, I don't know that today. And I don't know whether it's something that's, that's easily accessed from the data that we have. It is something that we could keep track of going forward, but I'll get back to you on that, what we've got and how we might be able to find that out.
Yeah, I mean, and, and really, just a, you know, a, a, you know, like a coarse estimate, you know, ballpark, ballpark guess. You know, are we talking 20%? Are we talking 40%? That, even that would be, would be helpful, just, you know, as a starting point. And you could fill us at, fill that, you could fill us in with actual data later on. But, but, you know, just to understand what kind of impact tourists, you know, visitors have on, on the workflow of your office.
Understood, okay.
Thank you.
And do.
And I'm just wondering, did all the files get transferred? I know that was a project that was being worked on in 19. I wasn't sure if it got done before COVID hit.
Yeah, it wasn't, our, what we were doing was going through all the files and purging the ones that were old enough and, and then archiving the rest. And the answer to your question is yes, that happened, that, we did get that done.
Okay, good. Mr. DePond, did you have anything other?
I don't have anything else to say. It's good to see you and remember, you know, remind ourselves we're providing this service to the community. You know, as I say, a speeding ticket down a urban core of one of our small cities is a standard maybe violation. But also the, the small claims and, you know, other work you do in that office is very valuable to our community.
And, you know, we, like, I think things like holding court where the citizen lives and doing it so they don't have to miss work is also something that, you know, circuit court does not do. And I'm not, that's not a criticism, they, they just can't do it. But we can. And so somebody who doesn't have a driver's license doesn't have to drive to get to court. And our philosophy towards people in that sort of situation is always to first ask them, well, what, what's your plan to get your license back? And if there's a possibility that they could get it back in three or four months or something like that, I'm not going to fine them if they get their license back. Because I want them to use that money to get their license back. And I see a lot of, you've, you've heard this spiel from me before, Commissioner. I've, you see a lot of people that when they were younger, they just got, made a little hole that they didn't pay attention to, became a big hole. And now they've got a kid and they've got a job and they need that driver's license, and there's no bus. And so I'm, I'm just giving, I'm just telling everybody this, even though it's not, not a question that you asked, because, because this, the way the legislature went about trying to fix that problem is really just not helping at all. And the courts were cognizant of it, and we were trying to do something about it. And I wish they'd have asked us before they decided what the problem was and how to remedy it.
If I could ask a, you know, follow-up question on that. So, I mean, I, I greatly appreciate the, you know, the philosophy that, that you follow in, in, you know, implementing your, the, the decisions of, you know, and the decisions and the treatment of, you know, people who've committed crimes in your court. And I guess, I'm wondering if you could, you sort of gave us a qualitative explanation just now. But, you know, could you quantify or assign any kinds of numbers to? We are able to help people who are in very tenuous positions, you know, get back on track and, and, you know, stabilize their lives or, or, you know, you know, get off on the right foot. You know, that you had a certain ability to do that before. And now that, that sanction of, 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 that, that, you know, license-related sanction has been, you know, kind of dented or impacted, you know, how much, how much does that reduce your ability to help people get, get, get off on the, on the right foot or get back on track?
Well, the, the legislation was, was prospective. And so that, it was from that date forward that you couldn't, if somebody got their speeding ticket in 2020 and didn't pay their fine, you couldn't suspend their driver's license. But I'm dealing with people who haven't had licenses for years. And so if their license was already suspended for something, then, then I'm able to help that person. And the other, the other folks, you know, they, at that point, they don't care about, about their license. But I have driving while suspended, driving while suspended is at least a third of the tickets that I see, at least a third. And so there's still an awful lot of people out there. DMV told us at one of our judge conferences that they send out 400,000 driver's license suspension notices a year in Oregon. You know, what do we have, 4 million people in here and maybe half of them are licensed drivers, you know? 400, you know, 10% of the people, of the drivers at least, are getting their license suspended every year. So it's a, you know, it's, it's a real issue. And of course, a lot of them are just repeat offenders, but, but it's, it's still something that we can still do some good with here. And, and, you know, just as far as, far as the rest of it goes, you know, you see that, you know, people just aren't paying their tickets, but they, but that's, but that's going forward. There's still plenty of folks that we can help.
But it'll, it'll probably get worse as the people who...
It's, yeah, it is.
As the number of people who are post-whatever-that-date-was-in-2020 increases.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So fun story reminder, just came to mind. Many years ago, I drove to the DMV, so this wasn't the court at least, but the DMV to, you know, get my license renewed because it has expired. And the person said, you can't drive here with an expired license. I needed a driver's test, maybe, but you can't do that. So they sent me home, and I'm like, oh, okay. And it wasn't a good spot to walk. So I drove home with an expired license to go get a friend who drove me back to the DMV so I could take my driver's test. But just classic situation we end up. But, you know, you mentioned that, yeah, you're not motivated to take people's license away if they're working towards the right thing and understanding what's going on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I know if it's time to renew your license, it's a really good idea to do it. My husband was trying to do that yesterday, and I think he didn't have enough time. And anyway, yeah, it's always good because don't wait till the last minute.
And don't drive in with a renewed...
Yeah, do not do that.
...back in the day.
And the test definitely, I love it how they, when you take your DMV test and they tell you how many you've missed, and if you miss any more, you're going to flunk. I mean, it's like, nothing like making one even more nervous. So anyway, yeah, maybe they could change the way they do the test, you know? Make it positive, like, oh, my gosh, you have it, you're doing just fine, you know? Like, maybe we should pass that on to the DMV.
Well, nobody, you know, I mean, nobody, everybody has their license expire on them. It's good for 10 years. You always, you don't look at it every time you have a birthday, maybe the first four or five years. But, you know, so that's, that's just how it is. And that, and that test is a lot harder. I couldn't pass that test now.
It's really hard.
Look out.
No, I couldn't believe how hard it was. I had to, like, turn down the tennis and actually read the book because, yeah, a lot of little innuendos, so. But they did have one test, a question that I was told by the woman at the bank that flunked it six times. It was about if you go buy a horse and they have their hand up. And that question was actually on my test, so I got that one right. Yeah, like, what are you supposed to do? Slow down, so.
I didn't know that.
I know, yeah. They, I think they put their left hand up to tell you that they're on a spooky horse.
Good to know out here.
Yeah, it is truly good to know.
I haven't seen that ticket yet.
Really?
Passing of a horse or something like that.
Okay, well, we don't, we don't want to share that one, but anyway. I know, I felt so badly. The lady that flunked it like six times, so they finally just let her pass it. I'm like, okay. Yeah, you know, some people have tests better than others, so. Any other questions, Ann? Nick?
I just want to say it's been almost five months since I visited with you in your office. And I was just so impressed with your operations, your staff, your team, your philosophy. That's not my place to judge, but I was impressed with it. I just, it was a great orientation. It's great to see you again. It's been, I can't believe it's been almost five months, but I need, what a great update, and it's really valuable. Thank you.
Thanks, and thanks for inviting me. And I, I do have a super, super staff. They're, they're, they're justice court's greatest asset. Okay, all right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, Laura, back to, oh, the horses.
Equine Outreach.
Yes, okay, wow.
Great transition.
I know, silly.
All right, so get to Equine Outreach is requesting $2,000. This would help to cover their training materials, handouts, and set up for their volunteer training, T-shirts for volunteers, and then two expert speakers for training sessions, including promotion of the events and their setup.
So I, I'll do $300. I might buy a ton of hay. They weren't talking about buying hay and how expensive it is, but I, you know, appreciate what they're doing. We have helped them in 20 and 19. They forgot to ask us in 21. Okay, so...
I'll do 300 also. I mean, that's a, a good amount to get something going.
So do we want to go to Healthy Beginnings next, then?
I put in 100.
100, okay, thank you. Healthy Beginnings, they are requesting $1,405. This would help to support two community-based screenings in Redmond. They estimate that they would reach about 40 to 45 children who would receive these free health and developmental assessments. And then as, also the follow-up with their families and referrals if needed.
500. I'm going to see how many times I can do 500.
And I'm doing 300.
500 for me, please.
All came prepared today. Next up is High Desert Chamber Music. They are requesting $1,500 for their pop-up concert series during the summer. They bring free live classical music into public outdoor settings. So the funds would cover promotional fees, administrative costs, and performance fees.
So this really sounds like a, you know, kind of a put a smile on your face fun event. I'd like to be there when, you know, it's amazing seeing live music like that. It's always fun. So it looks like, was there a subset of kind of music or altering culture, arts and culture-related items that came our way this time? And did they just miss the last Arts and Culture Review, do you think? I mean, is there any trend, because there's like three of them or four of them? Cascades, High Desert Chamber. I guess, maybe those two, I guess, because then the Sagebrush Arts Society.
Applied to arts and culture.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I hadn't heard from them through the Arts and Culture process. I did reach out to those previous grantees.
They just heard about it.
They knew about it.
Yeah.
I'll do 300.
Me too.
Three is the number today for that one. There you go, 369.
Perfect. Next up is Holy Trinity Community Outreach requesting $2,000 for the Care and Share Community Outreach Program, which provides boxes of nutritious food on a monthly basis to individuals and families residing in Sun River and Lapine areas. These funds would supply about 80 of those boxes, which is almost one month's worth of food boxes for this program.
Well, it's great they showed the finances, the organization, a little bit of, you know, balance of the, of what's going on. So I'm supportive of 300. I'm sure anything's going to be good there.
Of course.
And I will do 300 also.
Me too.
Thank you. Lapine Senior Citizens is requesting $3,000 for their Feed a Senior program. They offer three nutritious lunch, nutritious lunches three days a week, dine-in or take-out. The, these funds... or take-out. Uh, the, the, these funds would provide about 750 meals, which is just over half of their typical 1,400 meals per month.
And they don't have to be a senior, correct?
That's right.
I, I thought that was really good. So I'm happy to do 500.
600, please.
Okay.
And I'll do 700.
All right.
[laughing]
Thank you. Uh, next up is the Sagebrushers Arts Society. They are requesting $2,000, um, to support the replacement of their failing 40-year-old gas furnace with a heat pump system that's reliable, providing environmental and economical improvements to the facility. Uh, you may remember that they were awarded $2,000 from our arts and culture grant program this year for this same project. Um, and they did account for that in their, um, project budget in their application.
Well, I think we've seen this before.
Yes.
The same one.
Yes, the arts and culture, um-
But I mean, uh, for the heating is what I'm referring to.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah, okay.
Same project.
Exact project, okay.
And it's getting more-
Because I knew, I had seen the name before. I'm thinking, yeah, and the heater.
Yeah, that was, uh, $2,000, yeah.
And if it's like everything else that we're buying in the world, it's, it's more expensive. I'll, I'll do 300. Hopefully I get them over the-
I, uh, I felt pretty good about the earlier allocation of the arts and culture. I'll hold on this one.
Okay. Uh, so then we have Shepherd's House Ministries, uh, requesting $2,000 to go toward purchasing a used 15-passenger van to help transport those experiencing houselessness from camps to shelters and other services. The van, uh, they would plan to operate it daily and estimate they would transport hundreds of people each month who struggle with access to transportation and care.
I'll do 500.
So I'm gonna stand by on that one. Um, yeah.
Uh, 700, please.
Okay. Uh, then we have Sri Ponia, which is requesting $2,500. Uh, they are a new organization to us. Um, these funds would help support the School of Recovery, which is a transformational program for students to, um, dive deeper into their spirituality and recovery from addiction. Um, I did speak with Jennifer because this, uh, program is currently in process, uh, but she confirmed that the funds would always be helpful, so.
I'll do 300.
This is another situation where I'd, I'd really like to understand, um, you know, their evaluation methods and, and, you know, their, their metrics for, for how they're doing.
Okay, I'm happy to pass that on. All right. And then we have Sun River Stars Community Theater, requesting $1,000 to help support their, uh, upgrade to a better portable sound system. Um, they've been using one that was acquired from a theater that closed. And they also have not had enough microphones for their actors. So, um, this purchase and implementation with other equipment they will acquire is planned to take place over several future phases, as you saw in the application.
I'll do, uh, 350.
350.
But, I mean, I, yeah, we'll, we'll see what you guys do. I might-
I'm, I'm doing 300.
Okay, yeah, so I wondered if-
300.
There you go. So that gets them real close right there.
And definitely, you know, we're supposed to be using different microphones, so.
Well, so put me at 400 then and we'll give them the complete-
We'll get there. That's nice. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was like, I'm kind of flexible on this because it's not a big ask. Good.
Great, thank you. And then for our fundraising requests, um, we start out with Jericho Road. Uh, they are requesting $1,000 to help cover the cost of promoting their benefit golf tournament, which raises funds that supports their programs throughout the year. Uh, these programs include free meals, weekend food for students, homeless camp outreach, emergency assistance, and rental assistance. Um, and last year they were able to raise $25,000 at the same event.
Oh, and I do have, um, they did just get their shower truck in, their brand-new shower truck today.
Oh, great.
I heard from Don Senical this afternoon. So I donated, um, I got shampoo supplies, conditioner and for, you know, small packets. And anyway, and then-
Very nice.
I did some other things too. Anyway, I went like, well, let's get, do some help. So, yeah, they're hoping they can collect like new towels and things-
Oh, sure.
For the shower truck. So, on a different, on a different scale.
Can I just ask an overarching question? So we're, this is Q3. We've still got Q4. We have requests before us for basically the entire amount that we have remaining. Um, is there something about Q4 where we would not expect as many fundraising requests? Or is it, I mean-
I haven't noticed, uh, any trends like that, really. It's, um, uh, the fundraising requests stay pretty consistent.
Year-round, okay.
Yeah.
So if we, if we wanted to have some left for Q4, well, we, we need to plan accordingly.
That, that's right, yes.
Okay.
Well, and we can be pretty flexible. Remember, this is part of the Video Lottery Fund itself. Uh, you know, we've kept it within our personal, you know, kind of allocation. So this fundraising, we, we could, yeah, I feel comfortable supporting these requests and whatever amount we agree upon. And possibly, you know, offering to provide more resources next, for the last quarter.
Is, would it be possible to bring in maybe like another 5,000 for the last quarter if we give all these-
Yes.
At their 100%?
What kind of reserve do we have?
Yes, what is our reserve, Laura?
Uh, yes, in the Video Lottery Fund, we currently have about 400,000 unallocated-
Okay.
Funds. So-
So we aren't overdoing our-
So 5,000 is, is just fine. Okay.
That's right, yeah. Yeah.
Well, yes, it's extremely conservative, so that would be good.
Okay. I'm, whoa.
So, uh, as I look at these, I'd like to support them all. For Jericho Road, might even offer 1,200 or 1,500, just get them going. And this may be the year of the golf tournament though, too, because, you know, everybody, last couple of years, golfing was obviously a big opportunity. But now people even be, feel a bit more comfortable to get out and try to-
Oh, yeah, for sure. I know, I just got the email for, remember Dan Felts' son who died of colon cancer? And he does a tournament every year at Tokati. And he's got that set up. So, um, yeah, I believe his son was only like 34 when he died of colon cancer. And it's been one of his missions in order to, um-
Yeah.
You know, like, uh, keep it in public awareness.
So as I say, how about $1,200 for Jericho Road?
Yeah, they could, they could go like an extra $200.
Yeah.
1,200, okay. We'll be excited about that. All right. So then next up, we have Latino Community, Community Association, uh, requesting $2,500 for their Gala de Oro fundraiser, which is a big event with dinner, auction raffle, um, and a dance. Their fundraising goal this year is $73,250, which helps support their programs, specifically workforce education. Um, the event also helps them attract new donors, provide education about their services, leverage staffing additions, and is an opportunity for them to celebrate their success. As you can see, we've supported this, um, this event quite a few times in the past as well.
I think it's important.
I would support the full 2,500.
Me too.
Great. All right. And then last up, we have the Sun River Women's Club, requesting $2,500, uh, for the Sun River Art Fair, which is a three-day in-person live fine arts event in the village at Sun River. Um, they raise funds to support their Sun River Women's Club Community Grant Program, um, as well as support local businesses and create income for the participating artists in the fair.
So can we do the full amount here too? And then we actually would have to transfer like 200 to cover the Jericho Road and 5200 then? I mean, for the fourth quarter?
You want 5,000 for the fourth quarter?
Yeah, if we do 5,000, just add an extra 200, 5200 for, does that make, okay, I mean, because we're paying, we're doing 200 more for Jericho, so we need 6200.
Yeah.
If we do all, um, the Sun River Women's Club on the same, I mean, I think it's really amazing. They've been around since 1972. Uh, I love art, um, three days. I think it's wonderful.
So if we, uh, fully fund them at the 2,500, we would just need an additional 5,200-
Right.
For quarter.
For the next, yes, to keep us-
Yep.
Keep us in the black, Laura. We gotta stay in the black.
Great, thank you very much.
Know our numbers.
And thank you for the binder. It's truly appreciated.
Oh, good.
Great job. And thank you so much.
Of course.
Laura, do you, do you, um, do you remember how much we put in this fundraising category for the entire year? Like at the beginning?
15.
1500.
So we're just kind of rounding that up to 20 then instead?
Yes, well, well, we did that. We had that extra quarter, you know, last year. So I think it's important.
Yep, great.
A lot of good groups that need to do fundraising this year.
So I know that Nick left to go to see someone more important than us. So thank you, Eric, for joining us.
Sure.
Do we have any other items?
There's somebody with his hands raised in the back.
We have one. Peter here to talk about planning commission appointment.
Okay, Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, for the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. We have, there's a couple, a couple of things to, uh, update the Board of County Commissioners on, uh, and looking for direction. Uh, so I'll start with, first is our vacancy from Les Hudson, who's our former chairperson. And, uh, in coordination with Human Resources, CDD initiated a recruitment. The recruitment period ended on Friday. And this is an at-large position. We received, uh, 12 candidates. And staff is looking for direction from the board. Uh, I think as Nick noted in his email to you this morning, in the past, um, the board has, uh, assigned one commissioner to work with the, the chair of the Planning Commission, which is now Jessica Curis, and the Community Development Director, to go through the applications or the candidates and then determine, uh, who to interview. And then, of course, when to begin executing those, those interviews. Of course, that subgroup would then report their, or convey their recommendation to the entire board for an appointment. Uh, the appointment would, would complete, uh, Mr. Hudson's term, which as I recall, um, is through June of 2023 or 2024. And then they would be, if they wanted to, if they wanted to be considered for reappointment, staff would come back and, and ask for board direction there. So that's the first of the three, uh, topics as it relates to the Planning Commission this afternoon. Then just looking for direction as to how you would like me to coordinate with the board to, to fill this vacancy.
I think it must be 24 because I believe I was part of that activity when we did interview for, um, when Les was selected. And that would have been in 20-
It is 20, in fact, I have it right here. You're right. Uh, Madam Chair, excellent memory. Uh, it's, his, his term started in-
I wouldn't say excellent, but-
The middle of May and, uh, of 2016. So, yeah, the, the term expires in this case in June 30th of 2024. So that would be the term for this, uh, for this, uh, replacement.
Okay. And we have 12 candidates?
We have 12 candidates, yes. It's, it's a, looks like a, an excellent group of, uh, residents from Deschutes County from all corners.
That's great. Well, I'd, I'd like to be, you know, have, have that group application shared with me, just for review, just a quick personal review. And also support the chair's, you know, committee work with yourself and the chair of the commission. And in the past, you know, if there's, if one commissioner says, hey, wait a minute, I want to be more involved, we can do that. So I'm just thinking it's, we can, we can kind of do whatever we want here. I like, you know, go ahead and get the three of you together. I support getting the three of you together to kind of give us the first cut. Because then, as I say, if you want to-
I, you know, one, one piece of history I would ask for is, uh, how recently have my fellow commissioners served in this capacity as a reviewer for Planning Commission candidates?
Um, for the Planning Commission? I did it two years ago for that one position. I think that's the only one I've done ever. Have you done?
Yeah, I've done it. I don't, it's been a couple of years, so.
There was one recently last, last fall, um, for a South County representative. Uh, so Commissioner, you may have participated with, with Nick and Commissioner Hudson for, um-
That was the process where Scott Asla came out, right?
Say it again.
Yes.
Wasn't that the process where Scott Asla was-
Not with somebody we, Tony Williams is the, is the commissioner that's now serving Southern Deschutes County. But we had a commissioner that had a, their, their, uh, full-time job was, was, uh, compelling them to, they just didn't have the free time any longer. So that was a vacancy that was created, I think, just last summer. So I think, is that, does that refresh your memory?
I don't remember what it was. But, yeah, I mean, it comes around, it's quiet, and then all of a sudden it comes around.
Yeah.
Right. And I remember, um, yes, Scott had to step down. He was-
But we, I mean, it's very much for all of us to be very engaged.
Right, exactly. I don't think it's, I know.
Yeah, and I, and I certainly know that the, when the recommendation comes to the board, it, uh, that, that, this is not, it's not a rubber-stamp process by, by any means. Um, but, uh, you know, given that my fellow commissioners have both served pretty recently in that kind of more, uh, uh, you know, from square one review process, uh, I, I would be interested in doing that this year. Or for this position.
Well, okay. And you're saying historically, when it was, we were, we're not selecting the chair, we're just selecting the at-large position, correct? The chair is selected by the group?
Correct. In their first meeting in January, the commission selected Jessica Curis as the chair. Um, it just so happened that Les Hudson's two-year term was, it completed, uh, in the new year. So there was, uh, an opportunity for the Planning Commission to select a new chairperson, and vice chair for that matter.
And who's the vice chair?
The vice chair is, uh, Commissioner Susan Altman.
Okay, Susan Altman then. All right.
Commissioners, just for your consideration, if more than one commissioner wants to be involved in, in the review and the interview process, staff can certainly accommodate that. And like the Budget Committee, the, all three commissioners tend to be involved. And so we have three separate panels. So that's just something for-
Oh, that'd be great.
That's just something for the board's consideration is if, if two commissioners want to be involved, we can certainly, uh, incorporate that.
Okay, good.
Does that mean that, doesn't that mean each of the three of us would be signing up for 12 interviews?
Yes. Well, it, it's really up to the board. It, the board could, I mean, it sounds like, I'm not sure, Commissioner-
I want to look at all 12, but I don't need to be in the process down deep right now.
So one option is to interview all 12. And then if there's two commissioners involved, we have two panels. Or based on the commissioner review of applicant, of the 12 applicants, the board can narrow down a certain number to interview. So instead of interviewing 12, the board can narrow it down to six or four.
I would say maybe if, yeah, if we would, um, narrow it down to six and then go from there. I mean, it's, it's outstanding to hear that 12 people in the county are so willing to commit that much time because it's, it is, it's a big responsibility. What is it? Every other Thursday? It's, yes, it's a huge responsibility and it's so appreciated.
I mean, another approach is the board could ask, uh, Peter and the Planning Chair to go through the applications, narrow it down to six, and make a recommendation to the board on who to interview. And then the board can decide whether or not to interview those six or others. So several different options for board consideration.
Um, I, that, that last scenario sounds like a, a good approach to me.
Sounds like a win-win.
Okay. So I'll just, I'll just recap that. So Chair Curis and I will go through the 12 candidates. And Commissioner, I'll, I'll forward all 12 candidate profile, the applications to the entire board. And, uh, Jessica Curis and I will go through and identify the top six for, for the board's consideration. And then, um, we'll set up, I'm hearing, uh, two panels, um, uh, where, uh, the Chair Adair and Commissioner Chang will, uh, work with myself and Planning Commission Chair Jessica Curis to interview, um, the six. And do you have a preference? Do you want to do that i- in person? Or are you comfortable doing it remotely?
Well, hopefully we can do it in person. The numbers are going the right way. So, yeah.
You know, I, I'm not trying, I'm not trying really hard to add a lot of in-person meetings right at the moment. But by the time that this process plays out, I'm guessing-
Okay, great.
We'll be in a better place.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll, I'll set that up, and we'll, we'll shoot for interviews late February, early March at the latest.
Early March would be lovely.
Early March, okay, we can do that.
I have a really big birthday party that I have to plan for someone, and, oh, boy.
Remote?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have a remote birthday party. I think I'll send him golfing somewhere. I'm sure he'll love it.
Okay.
Honey, wouldn't you want to go golfing?
Well, thank you for that. That's just the direction. So I'll set that up for early May, and we'll-
March.
I said May, March, and we'll figure out the meeting rooms. I'll work with, with Sharon and Sharon Keath. If I may, two other items, just for your consideration. Jessica Kieris is round, who is our Planning Commission Chair, is rounding out her first term. Her first term ends in, in June, on June 30th, and she would like to be reappointed. And so, this is, so you, the Planning Commissioners get two, if, if the board agrees to reappointment, they are allowed to get two terms. And so I'll let you think about how you want to handle Ms. Kieris's reappointment request. It could be, at the completion of this recruitment process for Les Hudson's vacancy, that reappoint, that appointment process, if the board was so inclined, could choose to appoint Jessica Kieris for another four-year term. But that's just one option. I bring that to your attention.
And is there kind of a, like a typical cycle to consider, consider and, and complete that, that reappointment, or is it just kind of, when a, one commissioner is nearing the end, they, they throw their hat back in the ring again, or?
Staff, Commissioner Chang's staff tries to work well in advance of when the, when they term out. And so thanks to Sharon Keith's leadership over the years, you'll see most advisory committees, the members' terms are staggered. And so that has been established with the Planning Commission. So as staff, you know, my goal, I knew immediately that in January that I needed to reach out to, to Jessica Kieris to ask her if, you know, if she was interested in another term. She, she was, and then that was before the, their first meeting in the calendar year. And then, as noted, because of not only Les Hudson's vacancy, but the fact that his two-year chair position timed out, the commission had an opportunity to discuss amongst themselves and nominate colleagues to be the chairperson, and it was by, it was unanimous that the commission voted to have Jessica Kieris as the chairperson. And just for context, over the last two years, she's been vice chair.
And is there anyone else whose term is, is, is coming to an end, or?
Great, great question. That was going to be my third point. Just to keep you abreast that Commissioner Steve Swisher, in Sisters Country, in the Sisters region, he's completing his second term. And so he actually has fulfilled his, his responsibilities as a Planning Commissioner, is no longer eligible for another term. So later in the spring, I'll, I'll work with Human Resources to initiate a recruitment for just the Sisters Country region, and I'll come back before the board, like I'm doing this afternoon, to talk about the candidates and how the board wants to interview that vacancy, or the candidates to fill that vacancy.
So you don't have to have a Sister ZIP code, but you have to be in Sisters Country, correct?
You know, I can look at the, it's, we have, it's, it's in the Sisters region. I don't know if our code explicitly defines the boundary. We have a, we have Southern Deschutes County, we have Sisters, we have Two Bend area, which can include Tumalo, and, and then we have, we have a Redmond area, and then two out large.
All right, good.
So there's, there's been a tremendous effort over the years, as, as, as our seasoned commissioners are well aware, to make sure we have adequate geographic representation for the Planning Commission, just given our, the size of our county. So, yes, I'll be back. That third point was, you can, I'll, I'll likely be back in late March, early April, with, with the results of a recruitment for that position. The, we had the, the at-large position that we're talking about today, that was open for just about a month. So I can imagine in the month of March, we'll initiate a recruitment, and I'll come back in April to talk about the process for filling that, that vacancy.
Thank you.
So I guess, coming back to the second point, is if, if the commission is, is comfortable with Jessica Kieris, as for a, for a second term, we can, staff can work with admin as part of filling the at-large vacancy. So when that position is eventually filled by appointment, there can be a, a formal acknowledgement of Ms. Kieris being reappointed for her second term. If the board wanted to do something differently, I would, I would welcome that direction, again, because her term expires at the end of June.
Is there any historical precedent for us opening up a solicitation for a position that is currently filled, where the incumbent wants to have a second term? I mean-
My, my recollection, recollection, at least, the most, you know, the past few years, is that if a commissioner with good standing respectfully is asking for board consideration for reappointment, that the board is, has acknowledged that and, and rewarded it. But I, I think in years past, there was, there certainly were processes where they went through another recruitment, where the, the standing commissioner was, was still being under consideration, and there were other candidates that could be evaluated in relationship to the, I'll call the incumbent. But it hasn't happened, I don't think, in, in the last few years.
I just, I just was so appreciative of all the people that we interviewed in the time I did do it in 2020, that, you know, really some qualified people come out to, to help us. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So it's-
I'd like to talk with Jessica, just say hi, catch up, what, how's it been going? So that's kind of my mindset on this. There's no reason, I don't think that we wouldn't be in, that, I wouldn't support her reappointment. But, yeah, let's take a moment, and, yeah, I'm gonna say hi to her, because it's been-
Would, would, if, would the, other members of the commission, would, would they be comfortable reach, having Jessica reach out just to check in, or?
Yeah, just, I welcome that.
Okay, I'll, I'll, if, if it's okay, I'll have, I'll, I'll provide Jessica your contact information, and let that happen between her and, and the board, and then we can, we can revisit it if necessary. If not, we'll, staff will keep this on the, on the agenda as part of, at least that potential appointment process, as part of filling the at-large position.
Peter, maybe, maybe by June, we can have a joint meeting or something with them?
Certainly, certainly. I, that's always on our work plan to have a, either annual or biannual check-in. Both the board and the Planning Commission should be through providing input on the draft work plan. So I'll, I'll note that on the calendar, and I know they, they welcome that engagement. So I'll note that for a meeting in June.
Okay, well, let's hope we can do that.
And then the, the agenda, the items that goes to the Planning Commission is the responsibility of the Community Development Director, right? So my, I'm just reminded that, you know, the, the agenda doesn't just come out of thin air. It's really the, the current activities, the things on the horizon, the work plan that's put out by, in partnership with the board, and that's how the agenda gets kind of scheduled up for the topics.
Correct. The work plan very much informs, for those that might be listening or watching online, very much informs the matters that go to the Planning Commission. As the board is well aware, starting late spring into the summer, we're going to be talking about the Comprehensive Plan update. There's going to be community engagement, open houses involved that I suspect the Planning Commission will have some role in convening. So the Comprehensive Plan update, the Tumalo Community Plan, Sisters Country Trails, the new proposed wildlife inventory for, for mule deer winter range. So there's a lot that's headed to the Planning Commission very, very soon. The next two years are going to be the Transportation System Plan update, which is working its way through the Road Department. It has to get adopted into our Comprehensive Plan. Those are just a handful of many other items that the Planning Commission and ultimately the board are going to be discussing. So it's a, I can't, it's, I can't recall a, a year or a biennium of that our Planning Commission is going to be interfacing with for quite some time, probably ten years, where there's just some substantive projects with the board's support, of course, that involve community engagement and, and our community assets.
But just the, the development pressure, the dynamics of people moving out of big cities and looking for maybe a more rural lifestyle, yeah, there's, the world has kind of changed. The high-speed internet, working from home, home delivery, it all fits into this rural development pattern scenario. That's really interesting.
Looking for their first horse. Don't forget that. The day of the horse, so.
I, I thought it was the Year of the Tiger. That was yesterday, right? The Chinese New Year. So, put in perspective the Comprehensive Plan, so is that kind of, that's a twenty-year horizon document?
It is, Commissioner. The, it's a, it's a twenty-year plan with goals and policies that provide, provide policy direction for how, with this, of course, the direction from the Board of County Commissioners can address growth and development in rural Deschutes County, and as well as how we can best coordinate with our, our partners, our city partners over the next twenty years. And so, the last time our Comprehensive Plan has been updated was in 2010, and much has changed over the last decade. And with the board's support, we're, I think in about the next four to six weeks, we'll have a consultant for your consideration for retaining, and we will be embarking on a, an eighteen-month community engagement with stakeholders and members of the public to talk about rural development matters, coordination issues with our cities, and other items that the public identifies that can be ultimately incorporated into a policy document that then can be used to prioritize how, with the board's direction, how CDD can be a partner in addressing growth and development opportunities.
So it's a twenty-year horizon, and the goal is generally to update it every ten years?
You know, the board has been incredibly supportive in making sure that the Comprehensive Plan is, is relevant. There's no requirement for counties to update their comprehensive plans like there are with the cities. So it's really dependent on kind of what the board is, what expectations are, the, as expressed through their constituents in the community. For example, the Tumalo Community Plan, which is one of the, we're going to be updating that community plan over the next twelve to eighteen months. The last time we, that plan was revisited was about ten years ago. So you'll notice in the draft work plan, that'll be forthcoming for the board's consideration. We, and whether it happens this year, time, time and resources dependable or available, based on availability, we do plan on eventually having conversations with Nubraye Country residents about how's the Sisters, how's the South County Plan functioning? Does it need to be revisited? And then the same is true for the Terribon Community. So we know those conversations need to occur, and it's based on what you just said, Commissioner. So much is happening to our community on it, what feels like a day-to-day basis. But when you look back ten years, there's been some profound investments in community growth that, that warrant revisiting these kinds of conversations with our constituents.
Great. And then one more item. I had sent you that email about that work plan item. So that was the ham radio operators and clarity in our code about the height restrictions or, or conditional versus outright authorization for, for cell towers, I mean, ham towers, not cell towers. But I think that's why it got complicated, as in, I have a hunch that our code, you know, because of this thing called a cell tower, which is this big monstrosity with these huge antennas on it, maybe our code evolved a little different than, hey, this guy just wanted to put up a tower in his backyard to get his ham, you know, thing going. So, so that, just for the other commissioners to hear, you know, it was a request for it to be a discussed, would it be part of the work plan? But can you help me with, what's the timeframe of the work plan? As in, is that coming around?
Thank you. So we're currently drafting the work plan, which happens on the new year, to identify projects that the board has identified for consideration. Some of these projects, in this case, are multi-year projects. For example, the Comprehensive Plan being, being one example. So staff prepares the work plan. It's, it's not just the Planning Division. We, we are capturing the entire department of what our roles and responsibilities are, what expectations we have project-wise for, for the next fiscal year, some of the challenges that we're experiencing as well. And then we also have a, a yearly recap of, of our responsibilities. And so that's in, that's in an appendix, so that for those that are interested about CDD, they can read about what accomplishments occurred in, in the, in the calendar year. And I always find that very valuable, because I think it really, as everyone knows, we, we are seeing such tremendous investment in our community. And this report kind of binds what we, what, what we've achieved over the, over the last calendar year, and where we can focus our resources, of course, with community input and ultimately board direction about those, how those resources can be allocated for the next fiscal year. So there will be a Planning Commission public hearing likely in March, at, at, at the latest would be early April, and then we would get to the board. We have to work around your budget, the, the budget season. But it would be late April or early May to get your feedback. And these are public hearings where members of our community can provide their input, add, suggest other additions, verify or validate the ones that are being contemplated. And then the board, for those that are listening at home, the board acknowledges that plan, and then it provides the basis for staff to, at least in the Planning Division, to allocate our resources in a responsible way.
And then also, this is that, sorry, I just had to roll here, but this, the, if there was a code, a code change envisioned by somebody, instead of doing it applicant-driven and writing a check for it, this is where, hey, county, does this make sense for, you know, the, the county as a proper to do it for everybody? So this is where somebody might ask for something that makes sense relative to some scenario, and you just put it in the work plan, which is kind of the-
Correct. And what, what the board has always recognized is those types of amendments, if there are changes to our zoning code, you know, it's not just as it pertains to one particular property, but there's real utility in providing opportunities to amend the code, to take advantage of an economic development opportunity, for example, that could apply, you know, across the county based on certain zoning districts. So, yes, the plan has, has accommodated that with the board's support, of course. So it's really supposed to be a repository of, you know, projects that the board has identified that are just like the ham radio, as a, as one for consideration, in addition to other projects that, there are some that carry over. I dare say, you know, over the course of a couple of years, just because we haven't had the, the resources to execute them. But we keep that list active and look for input from our community, from our Planning Commission, and ultimately the board, to determine how to prior, best prioritize our resources. I mean, we see, I've always felt that your Planning Division, especially long-range planning, are your consultants, and they, you know, they're excellent at what they do, and, you know, the board has the ability to direct how to utilize them in the best way possible.
I was actually talking to someone today who had come from Coeur d'Alene, and the fact that they are like, you know, Idaho is the number one growing state in the nation, and apparently Coeur d'Alene is really impacted. And, you know, it would be interesting to see what they're doing there to handle the growth. They're around, you know, all those lakes that go on forever. So, yeah.
We are very fortunate, and we, I've, I've been lucky enough to work for Deschutes County for eighteen years, and the Board of County Commissioners has always valued the role that planning can make in a community. I've heard Commissioner DeBonne acknowledge it, who's been here the longest, acknowledging, you know, when we're, you know, when we have an economic downturn, it's- you know, when we're, you know, when we have an economic downturn, it's, you know, you can, you can begin to plan for growth. And when you have the growth, you can, you can utilize planning to manage that development. And we've just been very fortunate, you, this board and your successors, of course, in concert with the entire team of admin and legal counsel and others, to support planning to ensure that we're addressing those matters that are most important to the community. So it's nothing that, as your director, that I'd ever take for granted, and I think our staff is very humbled and appreciative to know that the board is, has that continued commitment to, to address growth-related matters. So it's, it's been quite a year, and no doubt next year will, will bring a lot of opportunity and conversation.
Well, how interesting that they had that volcanic activity on South Sisters on the news this morning, and then we had the boom here, you know, and it's, it's just like, okay, that would have just been, yes, thank goodness that was a local contractor.
Yeah, thank you.
Since I was, do you guys remember when Mount St. Helens went off? Oh, my gosh, I lived in Seattle and it went dark. I mean, totally dark. So that was, and we knew that was going to happen, so, yeah, I know. Do you remember it? Were you here?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
It was just in national news.
I saw the ash on the East Coast.
Ah, well, anyway, I, it turned dark in, I think it was in the middle of the day in Seattle. Remember, they had to stop all the flights and the ash went all over the world.
There was ash in wheat country, in Wasco County. So, yeah, definitely covered a lot of ground.
Oh, it did. All right. Oh, my gosh, Peter, so glad you were at the head of the, of our building department, our development. Anyway, I know your plate is full, but, and thank you for responding on Sunday, but please try and take Sunday off.
Thank you. Thanks for your time today.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Is there any other business? Okay. Stephanie, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.